Thank you for coming. The Chair will be late this evening. As Secretary, I need to open the meeting of November 14, 2016. It is 6:33. We need a motion on the floor to nominate someone to act as Chair, please.
I don't think it's working, but I'd like to move to have Greg Strick be Chair for the evening.
Just a moment.
No objections, right?
Just a second.
Can you try now, please?
I've always wanted to do this.
Madam Secretary, call for the roll.
Mr. Spring.
Here.
Mr. Walker.
Here.
Mr. Sporhays.
Here.
Ms. Bailey.
Here.
Ms. Barker.
Here.
Mr. Strick.
Here.
Mr. Robinson will be late. Mr. Spinelli is excused. Thank you.
I don't see minutes, so we'll move forward for disclosures. May I have disclosures, Mr. Spring?
I have none.
Next demo.
None.
No disclosures for me.
I have none.
Nothing to disclose.
I have none.
Thank you. And moving forward, we need a motion on the floor to re... We need a motion to reorder the agenda to add two of the cases that have been added at your desk. We have 43 and 44. Do I have a motion?
I move to add the two resolutions to the consent agenda.
And we have a second by Mr. Walker. Is there any discussion on the floor regarding the current three consent agenda items? No objections to adding those two.
Oh.
Do we have any discussion now to... Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
And we have a second by Ms. Barker. Is there any item that anyone wishes to pull from the consent agenda?
Yes, I would like to pull Resolution 2016-042, rezone from R3 to R0.
And we have a second that was for approval. Do we have a second on that? Set the motion. We have a motion for Mr. Spring. Do we have a second?
Let's see.
That was the original. Did you second his motion? Or was that the original consent? Okay. So that's been pulled. So to finish the consent agenda, we have a motion then to approve the consent agenda for the remaining items. Do we have a motion on the floor?
Yes, I move.
Is there any objection to approving the two remaining items on the consent agenda? Hearing none. So approved. Now we can come back to 2016-042. Mr. Spring, would you care to speak to your motion?
Yes, I would. The resolution's fine with the exception of the finding of fact, number A5. I think we need to postpone this in order to review the minutes. I actually did listen to the minutes this afternoon, and there was not, at least in the findings that were expressed during the discussion of the motion to approve the rezoning. I was the only one that mentioned the site plan. And when I did mention the site plan, I specifically mentioned the need for a traffic impact study in conjunction with it. So there's two issues I have with this. One is that I was the only one that mentioned that issue. Everyone spoke to the issue during the discussion. Not one person mentioned their support of that concept. And so therefore, I believe that it's unfair to say that the Commission may consider support for this rezon when it wasn't really part of the findings. And that's just kind of trying to read the intent of the Commission, which is, I don't know who can do that. I certainly can't. And there was plenty of opportunity to make a motion to add that amendment. No one elected to do that. After the approval of the motion, there's ample opportunity to have a reconsideration. No one did that. I don't see any evidence that there's a consensus to support this finding here, and certainly not in the minutes that I had listened to.
This would be a question to the Secretary, and that would be with number five. If it was brought up during the meeting, course of the meeting, there was no objection or commentary, comments by any of the Commissioners, whether yea or nay, but we do recall, I believe, that this topic was brought up. Can it or is it appropriate that the Commission vote as a consensus whether or not to include this comment, even though it wasn't spoken to adversely or for or against identified in the meetings? It was a comment that Mr. Spring brought up, but no one commented?
Thank you. Through the Chair, Mr. Spring, Commissioner Spring, you said it was in the findings between the motion and the vote?
The only comment was that I expressed that...
And that was following the motion?
That was an idea that I had and throwing that out for discussion and didn't pick up any discussion. So I think, although I did mention it, this seems to imply that the Commission may consider support for this rezon. And, you know, there was no support for the rezon during the discussion of the actual...
It would be at your discretion, but if it's in the findings, they could state that one Commissioner addressed that and no one responded. They could put that as a finding.
That would be more accurate.
Okay.
Certainly. And then you'd have to add the TIA part of it, too, because I specifically mentioned the TIA part.
Okay, thank you.
So that would be accurate.
I think in the interest of trying and working to be thorough, this was a denial that the Commission posed. And while we're not trying to overturn the denial, we had that opportunity through a motion of reconsideration that did not take place, but we could... We're communicating this now to the Assembly. And in so communicating, there were some issues. And I think that's noted in our denial, but this is not intended to give an out, but it's intended to give additional future consideration on this item. So I don't think we're trying to minimize the denial, just seek additional clarity. And for that reason, I'm looking to the rest of the Commission as to whether or not we look at a vote within the Commission, to whether or not it's acceptable to have a vote for that finding. Or do we find that because, as Madam Secretary indicated, that this is by default in because it was a finding during the course of, and no vote, and we let it stand? Any discussion? Hearing none, and without belaboring the issue, where do we stand as far as moving forward then on this consent, this consent agenda item? Right now, it's pulled.
Are you looking at me, but I would like to hear what other members have to say about it?
I'm looking across all the Commissioners, but hearing none and seeing none, it dies for lack of motion, and it remains off the consent agenda for future date.
Excuse me. Through the Chair, you want it as a finding on there, though that something was addressed about the TIA and the site plan. You really can't move to add something in there that wasn't in there, but that was included in the findings between the motion and the vote. So you really can't make a motion and vote on something to add in there. The resol's there. If you wanted them to add it into the findings, have staff add it into the finding, then you postpone it pending having that item added.
But you're saying it would be allowable to be added by the staff for future consideration as a consent item?
The resolution will be on the next consent agenda item. It already will be on the consent agenda, it's just postponed until the minutes are here.
Are we gonna, are we gonna hold up the applicant's ability to reapply if we don't approve this tonight and we put it off until the next meeting?
I believe that it would have to come before the Assembly regardless, before the applicant could reapply. Or does this, since it's denial, it still moves forward to the Assembly for their consideration? We're just recommending to the Assembly their action. We don't make the final call.
All right. Well, I'm just gonna be frank here. I think we all talked about it after the meeting, and it seemed like...
Well, let's be careful. We all didn't talk about it after the meeting. There were discussions in pockets, and so therefore, that was not part of the Commission's meeting.
And I think that the banter afterwards seemed to indicate that everybody would have, that we would have probably supported this with the site plan review and the biggest, you know, and then probably the biggest holdout would have been John really wants his TIA. So I would like to see this, some reference to this included to the Assembly, and I don't know how that helps the applicants at all, but maybe the Assembly will kick it back to us and...
Doesn't this go to the Assembly?
Through the Chair, Mr. Shawntal, this was going to the Assembly, or this was a denial of a rezon?
Through the Chair to the Commission, for this to go on to the Assembly, it does require having the resolution, basically, in indicating that you've denied it. So any stalling or any not, I mean, you need to make a decision that you're comfortable with in terms of that resolution. But you also need to know, I think, that the staff will be preparing an Assembly ordinance supporting acceptance, which is tradition, even when you guys deny these, just so that it's ready in the event that one or a couple of the Assembly people who are required. I think it takes two Assembly people to pick it up after you've denied it. But without that resolution, there's no way for it to really get picked up at the Assembly level. So a failure to move forward on the resolution does impact the ability to go forward with Assembly consideration of this, whether it was that they would either approve, deny it, or remand it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Let's go back. We got Mr. Walker, who is in the queue, and Ms. Barker. Let me catch up with Ms. Barker. Please.
I guess I'm trying to figure out, maybe I'm fishing, asking for a point of order here. It seems to me that we have an option to postpone this to time certain, to the next meeting. We can instruct staff to rewrite it based on minutes of the meeting. That's one way to go to it. The other way is we simply not... We pulled it from the consent agenda. So it seems to me that our action now is whether or not we will choose to take it up at this meeting, or whether we'll postpone it till time certain. I think those are... I think those are our two parliamentary options.
I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Okay.
And I guess I'm just trying to get clarity on that part of it, so that we know exactly what our parliamentary options are. My understanding is that, you know, we either take it up and take action on it now because it's been pulled from the agenda, or we choose to postpone it, or we choose to table it.
Is it appropriate to submit it for additional additions? And so, Ms. Bailey?
I mean, we can amend it back to staff.
I would like to motion to amend the finding of fact number five, and then I think we would be able to vote on this matter here and approve it. My motion would be to amend number five to say, "One Commissioner expressed that they could have found more support for this rezon if a special limitation was imposed requiring the property owner to receive major plan approval and a traffic impact analysis prior to the development."
Do I have a second for that motion? Ms. Barker, would you like to comment on your motion?
I think that this amendment more clearly represents what actually happened at the meeting and is more supported by the facts of the record.
Ms. Barker? Any comments?
No, I concur.
Okay.
I have, I'm in queue, if I could speak. I'm in agreement with that. I think that's accurate. One, just one little minor clarification, however. In reading that, if I was reading that, I would say, "Well, the TIA could be done before development, but doesn't necessarily have to be done in conjunction with the site plan review." My comment was that it should be done in conjunction with the site plan review, so that the Commission could see all the facts and have all the information. So just to clarify that, I think, would that be acceptable to you to, if that was the way it was expressed?
Yes, that'd be fine with me.
Okay.
In my only comment, and I believe, I'm not sure I heard this, or if I did correctly, in that in that site plan, that that would be a site plan review that would be required through P&amp;Z, or not, or through staff? Did you have clarity on that item?
I think that's a good point. I think the intent, when I mentioned it, was the Planning and Zoning Commission would be the reviewer of the site plan review.
I don't believe that's how the current motion reads.
I would be fine with a friendly amendment, that the major plan review would be in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I would accept that.
Hearing no other discussion and amending the amendment as accordingly? Can we do that? Which we have? Let's vote. And we have motioned all the way through. Okay. Moving on, we have item E for unfinished business and actions of public hearings. This is not a public hearing, and we are moving now to discuss case 2016-0127, and that is the Municipality of Anchorage Long Range Planning Review and Recommendations. Do I have a motion on the floor as we move forward, to move forward? Mr. Spring, your motion, please.
Yes, I'd like to move to go into a committee of the whole. Sorry? I can't hear you. I don't read lips.
I thought he was doing good.
Thank you, through the Chair. You need a main motion on the floor.
Okay. Yes, I'm sorry. Move to approve the recommendations of planning staff for the... Are we talking about the land use plan map? I'm sorry. I withdraw.
Right. So I'm happy to make the motion. I just want to make sure, how are we gonna back out of this? Because we're not approving anything tonight, right? So the motion's gonna stay open when we go home tonight? Or I'm gonna, I'm gonna... No, we're, it's on the schedule that we're gonna, we're working on it next meeting, too, aren't we? So we're gonna make a motion, just so we walk through this process, we make a motion to approve it tonight, we're gonna go to committee of the whole, we're gonna go, stay in committee of the whole all night? So, okay, and what is that, what's that action? That's, I'm gonna pull my motion, or you're gonna table it? Okay. All right.
So we have a motion on the floor by Mr.... We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Walker. For...
In the case of 2016-0127, I move to approve the Land Use Plan Map Hearing Draft as written with staff recommendations, so that we can get into committee of the whole.
And we have a second by Ms. Barker. And we have a second motion, Mr. Walker.
I move to adjourn to the committee of the whole.
And that's seconded by Ms. Bailey. We are now into the committee of the whole. Let me... Let's vote.
We have to vote?
Not seeing any objections. Are we ready to, any objections? Hearing and seeing none, moving forward. Let me explain a little bit to the audience out there. We do have, I'm new at this, we have our Chairman and our secondary Chairman out and late, and so, and trying to move the process forward as expeditiously as possible, you're gonna see some confusion. For that, I'm gonna apologize, because a lot of the confusion rests with myself. This is something that, this is not the most comfortable seat to sit in. And so a lot of respect to Mr. Robinson and the other chairpersons that have sat in this seat in the past. And so for that, I give them my abundance of respect for and apologize for everything I've ever said. So as we push forward now on this item, we are in the committee of the whole now for discussion, and I would look, I believe, for staff to lead us through many of the discussion points that we had previously identified and waylaid, and give us some recommendations, too, as we're in this free flow, as to how you see us best accomplishing as many of these tasks and discussions tonight, so that we can keep the discussions moving forward lively and continuing again, moving forward. There's a lot here, but let's tackle the ones that we can, and let's, let's put a dent in this. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I have, do I have a comment from Mr. Spring?
Yes, just a point of order. I think I received an email from the Chair regarding what he, his thoughts were, how we could proceed, and he mentioned that we should focus on the green items. He thought that staff had concluded their recommendation on the green items, and if we focused on that and reviewed those and approved those, or at least go through them and mark yes, no, or maybe, question mark, and kind of skip the other ones that the staff hasn't thoroughly vetted yet, we might be able to get through it. Although I would like to make one caveat, though. I have a couple of other, a couple of questions regarding the ones that staff did not make a final conclusion on, and I'd like to have the ability to kind of raise those questions periodically.
And I think it would be appropriate, and I think you'll be able to see when you can add those in appropriately in the sequence during the topics of discussion.
Yeah. That's what I was thinking. As we go through them, we'll skip, I guess, maybe to all the green ones, and if there's something in between the green ones that I'd like to bring up, if you don't mind, I'd like to bring, ask a question.
And so as a reminder to staff, as we're going through this, just periodically, so that all the Commissioners can be on the right page, on the right step, as we kind of talked earlier, so that we can push through much of this, I don't want to blow through it, but I want to make sure we're all on the same page as we push forward, so that there's a clear, concise, succinct move, movement. Okay?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The idea of focusing on the green items and getting through the green shaded items in the far-left column is what we also ourselves hope for, and would encourage the Commission to, as the Chair suggested, make a dent in all this. To that end, the Commissioners received an addendum to the issue response that we completed today. It covers three items that we had not completed by last Thursday, when we distributed to you the issue response. So this is called an addendum to the November 14, 2016 draft of the issue response, and it has the blue sheet. It's a blue cover sheet. As we go through the main issue response and get to those item numbers, we'll let you know that they're actually covered in a more complete, updated way in the addendum, so that you can jump to the addendum and work on those. But we are mostly working off the big issue response. Your copy is eight by 14, and we can certainly go through in the order that they appear. That'd be the simplest. And we would agree with focusing on the green items for determining what the Commission recommends, yes, no, maybe, and then, like Commissioner Spring suggested, going back and discussing unfinished items. That would be wonderful. Thank you.
I think we're still looking for you to start that.
All right. Well, wonderful. Well, item, the first item is on page three of your document. Its number is 0B. Zero are the cosmetic items, and this, the purpose of this issue in here was to just document the reason why the plan's name changed and became what it is in the public hearing draft, to just briefly document for folks that it arose from the public comments, reactions of multiple people to the previous name, and folks thought, and we believe as well, that the new name, something we wish we'd have thought of a year ago, is better, and we recommend moving forward with it. But it was mostly to just document for folks why that name changed. Thank you.
Mr. Walker?
I was just gonna say, I can live with this, and I can't imagine that anyone else is not. So what's our, what's our process gonna be here tonight, as far as kind of chugging through each one of these?
Let me, let me come right back to that. Ms. Bailey?
I was gonna suggest that we move to accept this change, and then we take formal votes as we go through. That way, we're at least taking a record, and then if there's an issue we don't have enough to agree on, we can come back and discuss it. But I think it might be helpful to have a record that we are in favor of changes as they get accepted.
I believe we can have two forms of record. One is formal vote on each one. Secondly, informal, and we have the record testimony.
Well, since we're in the committee of the whole, we have to come out every time we vote. So I think we want to keep it pretty informal, and then Lori suggested that we just build our list of all the things we can live with, and we adopt all those in one fell swoop, and then we come back and just deal with the ones that we want to change on and ask.
Would it be appropriate to take an informal consensus vote on these items, and under the PZ action on the right-hand column?
Yeah. Yeah, I think we need to write a why or no, and maybe. So why don't you just ask, anybody does not approve of this, or think it's a bad idea, and go with that?
I like it.
Through the Chair, I can keep track here, motions and votes on here, even through the committee of the whole.
Okay.
So, and then go back to them if we need to. So, and then go back to them if we need to. But, yeah, that way, it's an informal vote, but it's still in here if you need help.
So... Mr. Spring.
I'm sorry. No, I spoke.
So, the item that we have on 0B, is there consensus that... Do we have full consensus?
Yes.
Hearing, no dissent. Next.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Can I interject another issue in between the next one? I won't do that very often, I promise. But I just have some questions regarding 1B. Because there's quite a bit... Quite a response from staff on 1B, reclassifying mobile home parks, basically, community sites to commercial. And I saw the response. And I just wanted to ask a little for additional response in the future. Maybe something for staff to elaborate on before we actually vote on this. And this pertains to the Debenham proposal on the southeast corner of Arctic and Benson. And I'd like a little bit more discussion about that in particular because it's... It can't be... It needs to be separated from the overall issue. I don't know if you were planning on doing that. But I looked at his proposal. And it's really unclear to me whether he can get what he wants with what you have in the classification map. You have the classification map as high-density residential... Or mixed... Residential mixed-use classification. And it seems like there's some leeway there to do some commercial. And you have to have 20 dwelling units per acre or something like that in conjunction with the commercial. So, I'd like your response to that in particular to see whether that classification would work with the proposal he has. And then, furthermore, I'd like to know if that is within the parameters of the new classification, how do you enforce the split between residential and commercial? How do you ensure that when development happens in this scenario, that you'll eventually get the residential? It seems like that's been a problem whenever we tried to implement something like this in the past. And I don't know what the new overlay zone's going to be... Look like. I have no clue. I don't know if you do. But... So, those are some of the things, issues. I don't want to go any further. But some of the things I'd like you to address when we get it back in particular.
And I want to echo, Mr. Spring. These are the same questions I have written on my notes. And to... And I was specifically looking at the Debenham proposal. Because when I first read the staff's recommendations on 101, I said, okay, sound. Looks good. Hold on a minute. Let's take a look. And as I read the Debenham proposal in there, I had a disconnect, which drew me back to the staff's comments. And of which... And I've got it... There's a sentence here. Where a public... Where a mobile home park has failing infrastructure and it is questionable if it can remain viable through the 2040. Who makes that determination?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Our approach is, in fact, on these significant proposals that we've received, including the Debenham and others, to provoke... Respond to them as individual items, referring back to this main 1B as an overarching context for how we approach it. And we are, in fact, in the middle of working with Mr. Debenham to arrive at a... At a... At a responsive recommendation to his concerns. And we'll document that in the issue response for you by December 5.
And the... And I would... Continuing this forward just a moment. The... In follow-up discussions in other areas of the city, and I believe it is in the Forest Park area, there's another mobile home park that is discussed. And what I was seeing is a... Not necessarily contradictory direction between the two parks. But on one, we're saying, hey, let's reclassify this for higher density, higher zoning. We haven't even talked to the owner at our peers. And then, versus the piece for... That we're talking here. I just want to make sure that if we're talking manufactured home communities that in our intent is in one, then tell us where it doesn't apply to another and why, if you're going to make a differentiate between the two.
Yes, we will do so. Thank you.
And Ms. Barker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think it's really important, particularly with respect to this particular issue, for us to step back and remind ourselves that this land use plan is aspirational. The zoning ordinance is intended to implement it. That's the regulatory component. But this is aspirational. And the aspiration that's expressed here is to preserve that land in residential use. And, you know, if for some reason we get down into the details of a specific proposal and perhaps that aspiration is not viable, then that's a whole different consideration. But the aspiration here is to preserve the land in residential use.
Yes. Thank you for that. And we will attempt to cover that as well with the particularly 1B and hopefully becoming a bit more succinct with a little more brevity to try and tie these individual sites for mobile homes to this 1B or an overall approach that we recommend. Because this is a plan and not a rezoning. Thank you.
So, without getting too far ahead of ourselves, we did move... We did pass 1A. Are we going to discuss and do the thumbs up, thumbs down on each item? And if so, then we need to come back to 0C? Or are we going to take each item in... Well, only green? Okay. Well, then, we just jumped in. So, is 1B now going to become green? And subject to additional comments?
Yes. No, I think we just gave some direction to the staff. And I'm satisfied that we'll get more information and we'll be able to make a recommendation at a later date.
So, that one's tabled, basically?
Excuse me?
It's tabled until we get some more information.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Bailey?
Yeah. Well, it wasn't... We... It wasn't my intent to ask for a recommendation on this. I just intended to ask for more clarification when we get ready, when they have their final recommendation ready.
Ms. Bailey?
I was just going to echo the same comments John just did and say that I think unless someone wants to do something similar to 1C, that then we should move on to 2A, just to keep things moving.
Moving forward. 2A.
With 2A. And by the way, if the commissioners are interested in discussing 1B further, the Debenham site further tonight after we go through the green items, we can do that. We've gone some way into the issue with Mr. Debenham. And any thoughts that you all may have are also helpful. In any case, at the moment, we are focusing on 2A. 2A is responding to an issue... Excuse me. An issue raised by Commissioner Spring. A true observation that many of the neighborhood centers, the areas of the bowl that we aspire to become neighborhood-scale commercial centers serving their surrounding neighborhoods, many of them are actually zoned B3, which is general commercial, not a neighborhood-oriented commercial, but just general business. Many of these areas are zoned for neighborhood-scale commercial, 1A... Or, excuse me, B1A, B1B. Many of these areas are zoned B3SL. And SLs have limitations on them that essentially make the B3 a bit more like a neighborhood district. And so, there's a disconnect between the aspirations of the plan and the existing zoning. And so, how do we implement the plan over time? We recognize that the... In many areas, there is B3 zoning on these commercial-designated centers. And that there is a partial mismatch. We believe that for the time being, we can live with that. And that there's a lot to this plan in encouraging these centers to take place that can be implemented even though the zoning is B3. B3 allows neighborhood commercial uses. So, it's not stopping implementation of the plan. And as we noted in our response, the market trend in these areas has been primarily low-scale development anyway. So, we're not... We're not... While the mismatch is there, we're not... We don't think it's the... An urgent priority to, for example, go out and do an area-wide rezoning of areas currently zoned B3 to B1A or B1B. But we still believe that it's the intent of the community that these areas develop as neighborhood-oriented centers in scale with the areas they serve. And that some of the action items we do have in the plan will probably be able to create incentives for these areas, incentives that don't exist today to develop as neighborhood centers.
You mentioned South Anchorage specifically. Would this have made any difference in the recent case we had before us, I believe, two sessions ago where we took, I believe it was a... On the corner of Huffman, Old Sword Highway, the Spinelli property. Would that have had any change? Or would that have been required to even come before us? Do you recall the case?
That property is in the designated Huffman Town Center area.
Yes.
And more happily, the town centers do cross-reference to a B3 zone. And so, that issue wouldn't be a problem there, rezoning to B3.
And so, you also identified most neighborhood centers reflect the adopted district plans. But in areas like South Anchorage that don't have an area-specific plan use plan, are there other areas besides south? When you say most neighborhood reflect, which ones don't? Which areas should we be concerned about that don't have an adopted plan, district plan?
Yes, there is one. It's currently a HLV municipal property. It's at the southeast corner of Raspberry, Minnesota. And it's vacant, undeveloped property. Much of it's wetlands, but there is a bit of uplands that's developable right near Raspberry. The land use plan map, although it's in the West Anchorage District Plan, I can pull that out and figure out what its designation was. But the land use plan map designates that as neighborhood commercial. It's new. So, there are those occasional ones that appear even where we have a district or neighborhood plan. There's also one that's in the East Anchorage District. It's been recently developed as mini-storage. It's zoned I-1. And it's almost across... Right across the street, across Muldoon from a church. And the land use plan map also suggests that that or the one to the north of that... Maybe I'm thinking of the Wayland Baptist University B. So, there are a couple of areas where the land use plan map designates a neighborhood commercial center that wasn't designated that way before, even in an area-specific plan area. And...
And I guess I would just caution, if your first response begins with most as this moves up in discussion with the assembly, somebody's probably going to ask you the same question.
Okay. Thank you. Question ready.
Yes. I guess I'm happy with the explanation. I mean, it's obvious there's a lot of similar situations where there's a disconnect between the designation and the underlying zoning. And I think the intent is good. I think the idea is good. I don't... It bothers me just a little bit that we can't really implement it, you know? It's nothing preventing anybody from going in and making a... You know, building a Costco at these neighborhood centers if they wanted to. So... But, I mean, the idea's good, though. So, I'm not... I'm not... I accept the answer myself and would recommend approving it.
I'm also in favor of the recommendation. I think this is a good example of an aspirational plan. And that there will be some inconsistencies, but it's generally for a positive direction.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, it may not be in the written response. Title 21 already, to some degree, recognizes these neighborhood plans and area-specific plans in that it adjusts its... Varies its height limits for B3 depending on how the area is designated. So, for example, it's in Huffman Town Center, has a bit of a higher height limit, allowing mid-rise buildings whereas in a neighborhood center area or corridor it. So, there's a little bit in there. Gets you partway.
Mr. Walker?
So, I guess I'm curious why the southeast corner is designated as neighborhood center, but the northeast corner is not? You know, clearly, the northwest and the southwest corners are pretty wet and they're not developable. But that's not the case on the east side. So, why not put neighborhood center at the northeast corner?
Yes, thank you for that question. The southeast corner is a municipally-owned property. It's zoned PLI. It's not currently zoned industrial. The area to the northeast is a part of the industrial district. There's a small enclave of industrial businesses just to the west of the Centerpoint Church. And that church building itself is partially industrial as well. We want to keep that industrial area intact. All properties are in use. There is one property that's just open storage and equipment area. But it's different down in the southeast corner where we have a PLI property. I need to understand that HLV has at times attempted to look at it as possible facility. But it's pretty narrow. It's a long lot. It's pretty narrow. Didn't have a lot of width to it. So, it didn't seem to meet any specific municipal facility size needs. And HLV's indicated to us that's a potential property that might be put to other use, commercial or mixed use. The neighborhood area, there isn't a whole lot of neighborhood commercial serving the Ravina area, you know, in the southeast corner. So, this was a concept. It's a long, narrow lot. And I'd say the southern two-thirds is just some kind of wetland. Thank you.
Seeing no other further discussions, what is the will?
I like it as written.
I see... I see an overwhelming consensus. Are you taking the vote? Keeping track? Good?
All right.
Moving forward.
2B is from several in the public as well as Commissioner Spring. And it is, how does this land use plan map allow for... Make way for additional small neighborhood commercial corner sites serving neighborhoods? How can we provide services closer within neighborhoods? And our response is that we believe that between the new Title 21 and the land use plan map and the neighborhood plans is that it does provide a means to provide new B1A areas in neighborhoods. And these would be like some existing, what we think are positive examples in South Edition and Airport Heights, where a new B1 area... B1A zoned area might take place within a neighborhood with a... neighborhood with more positive than negative impacts on the neighborhood. In general, the B1A is, it doesn't have those rezoning area size restrictions requiring, you know, nearly two acres be rezoned, and the neighborhood and district plans can identify new sites. We believe there's enough here at the moment. Certainly, all ears as to other ways to enhance this. Thank you.
Any discussion or questions?
Yeah, just, so where does it say that the neighborhood land use designations include B1A?
Yes, at the beginning of chapter, excuse me, section two of the plan, right at the beginning of the residential land use designations on page 26. At the beginning of each of the major categories of use, including beginning of neighborhoods, we have a bit of a paragraph about those areas.
I see.
And there it is. Yep, you see it. Thank you. It's page 26, second paragraph in the left-hand column. Many B1A-zoned areas are so small, you can't see them on those land use plan maps, that they just blend in.
I'm satisfied that that works for me.
Any further comments? Let's vote. Seeing no objections? And I caution, we have the document in front of us, too, so as we go through these in order to expedite, I mean, I assume some of us have done our homework, too, and some of these I have comments on, some of them I don't. So keep that in mind, Tom, as we move, or staff, as we move forward.
I'll try to get up on step here. On page 32 of the plan, middle column, we introduce the regional commercial center. It follows the town center. And in introducing the regional commercial center, we made a statement that the Department of Transportation, among their multiple comments they had, they had this one that it read as if we were discouraging local connections between the regional commercial center and any adjacent neighborhoods, that we were not encouraging local streets or pedestrian connections. That wasn't our intent, so here we have, in response to their comment, attempted to clarify what we were meaning to say, which is that regional commercial centers, we're talking about the Diamond Center, Tecotnou Mall, and the one that's called Glen Square, they're mostly surrounded by highways, maybe industrial areas. They aren't immediately ensconced in the residential neighborhoods right around them like a town center. And they aren't dependent on all that housing right around them. They're feeding the regional traffic. And so we hope that this language clarifies that, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Mr. Spring?
I think you did a good job of addressing that comment, although I'm not sure it really needed to be addressed or changed, but
Thank you.
Good job.
And I think the changes that you made were explanatory, self-explanatory, so appreciate that. Taking a look at the nods from the commissioners, any further comments? I see thumbs up. Thank you. 2D?
2D, top of page nine of your issue-response table. One of the action items in the plan, 4-13, Commissioner Spring observed that one potentially effective way to carry this out would be through introducing transfer of development rights as a tool, where the municipality, through the zoning code, sets up a market, so to speak, of development entitlement, where basically, an owner of a property in one part of town or one part of a neighborhood or district can sell their rights, their zoning entitlement, to a property owner that doesn't have those. Many communities do this. You know, technically, it's possible in Anchorage, and we're not sure if the market is there yet. We recommend that, in response to Mr. Spring's suggestion, that there could be an action, a new action, to explore the use of TDR, transfer of development rights, as a tool. The action 4-13 that Mr. Spring refers to as a timeframe of four to six years, that means it's a bit out there, and we recommend that the TDR also be a bit out there. We have a fair number of near-term action items. In the immediate term, we have limited technical ability at the Muni to implement TDR, so we're not quite ready for it, but we do believe it could potentially be very useful in the future. Thank you.
So I believe the consensus on that, as I read this, is that the request was for the staff through the city to explore potentially expanding the Anchorage use of TDRs. Is that correct?
Yep.
Any discussion? Seeing none? Consensus? Mr. Walker? Mr. Sporhays? Thank you.
The next green item, skipping 2E, is item 3A. Now, item 3A presented some draft language and approach to responding to UAA concerns about how its property is depicted. After further correspondence with the university between last Thursday and this evening's meeting, we revised our draft response, and now you have a revised draft 3A response ready for your review in your addendum. So you'll have to temporarily jump to your addendum and write it there. The very first item in your addendum is 3A, where we have modified our issue-response recommendation. And I'll turn it over from here to Mr. Tobich. Thank you.
Through the chair, if you recall, we did talk about this last week, and there was differences of concern and opinion about how the original language we had drafted in the first table from UAA mainly. They did send us back, they reviewed and sent us back recommendations of changes to the language, and I think the final that we're recommending here has benefited a lot from their review. So I can run you through it. Basically, it's one map adjustment and four text actions. So the first item is remove the Greenway Development overlay, Greenway Supported Development overlay, from the UMED area on the map. So that will go back to the original ground color of UMED district designation, was it dark blue, navy blue? The second item is delete all references to the UMED district from the Greenway Supported Development section subheading facilities and institutions, which is on pages 46 and 47 of the plan, the document. Third item is a text action inserting a new heading under the Airport Port and Railroad Facility designation, and a new subheading then under the University or Medical Center designation on page 39, called UMED district. And that's just a format, really. That's following the format from before. And then finally, four and five are our new recommended text additions under that subheading on page 39. And the first paragraph is entirely new, number four, item four under there. And this language here differs from the language in the table from last week. I can go through that with you if you'd like, or you can compare it. But item five is changing the text in the bullet on the top of the third column, the right-hand column on page 39 in that section.
Yeah, I think it's a good solution. I understand their concern when they see a green slashes across the property, and it might be misleading, but the question I have is, says that is necessary that future planning in this area is consistent with the institutional master plans in UMED district to address careful meshing of natural areas with future facility institutional development. Is there a requirement for UAA to have a master plan?
Through the chair, there's not a municipal requirement that they have a master plan.
So how, if they don't have to have a master plan, how would that mesh with it then?
They have their own master plan, it's simply, it's not, I meant to say, it's not adopted by the municipality. They have, APU, UAA have their own master plans.
Well, I see that as a potential issue. I'm not sure it's a problem, but, I mean, so, I mean, they can do anything they want with their master plan, with their institutional master plan, and, I mean, maybe it won't take into consideration any of these issues, because there's no public review of it.
Well, didn't we see some conflict, and I'm sorry to jump in here, Mr. Walker, but in parallel to what you're talking about, Mr. Spring, didn't we see some conflict when we were looking at the extension of Berga going through the university? And the need by the public testimony that we heard repeatedly about the open space, the natural vegetation, and the disruption that the road was going to cause, yet we had the university here advocating for that road coming through. Yes, there was some wetlands issue, but it was, on one hand, you had the needs of the university, you had the desire of the public, but at the same time, the university admits that the public, basically, and this is my word, trespassing, when they were using these ski trails anyway. So my concern is that we have the university with a plan, we have a designation that we're looking to place here. Which one overrides, which one has, does it carry clout, or is it just superficial? Because they have their own plan, and it doesn't really mean anything.
Through the chair, recall that the UMED plan, which is the area/district plan essentially there, represents a lot of the items found in the UAA master plan. And that is an overriding policy document.
So through the chair, what if there's a conflict? What if they do a new institutional UAA plan, and there's a conflict with the UMED district plan?
I don't think that's ever their intent. That's why they've signed on and were a partner in the UMED district plan. And the two reference each other as well, the two documents.
Is this paragraph four have consensus by the UMED, by the university? Are they okay with this comment?
Through the chair, we have given it to them tonight. I'm not sure. They've had the original plan, the original item we gave them since Thursday. This reflects their recommendations to our language.
Okay.
And I think that paragraph four adequately describes what Mr. Spring was getting at.
I think we covered it, but I'll just add that UAA's representative was nodding his head in agreement, so.
Ms. Barker?
I don't know that I have a whole lot to add. I think it's probably been said, but I appreciate the fact that you've linked the existing institutional master plans with the UMED plan and made that very clear in this response. I'm in favor of it.
Seeing no one else in the queue, what is the will of the body? Mr. Spring? Contemplating. He's thinking.
Yeah, I, sorry, I guess I'm okay with it. I wish I knew more about the UAA master plan, because we don't really see it. I know it was referenced in UMED district, but I don't, never really went through it to see how it, if it did correspond. And I don't, UMED district plan was very vague about this area. Very vague. I don't remember much discussion at all about it. Yeah, I should just go up and down, huh? Can I say a maybe?
You can say maybe.
I'll say maybe.
Ms. Barker? Thumbs up. Mr. Sporhays? And I can get behind it, too, considering the staff's comment that they did work with the university, the UMED folks, for the consensus of this language, but for that, I probably would have some hesitation, but with that commentary, I can get behind it. Are we past the maybe, Mr. Spring?
I'll go along with everybody else, I guess.
Then we have a unanimous move forward. Okay, moving along. 3E?
3E has to do with the boundary of the Anchorage Coastal Wildlife Refuge, and the public comments to show the boundary accurately and to designate parcels, properties within the Anchorage Coastal Wildlife Refuge as open space. And to
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
If I can, I believe you're going to want to go back to 3D or C? Yes. Let's go ahead and let him finish, and then we'll backtrack, because I have some questions on that topic as well. Is that okay? Thank you. Go ahead.
Did I say 3D?
I said 3E.
3E, oh, okay.
But I think that we are going to want to have some comments, even though it's not green that's imposed on 3B.
Oh, okay.
Because there was to be a status update from the Ternigan Community Council rep who had a scheduled consultation meeting on November 10th, and I believe we're going to see, hear an update at today's meeting on that meeting.
Yes, we are arranging to meet with Ternigan Community Council, and we intend to meet with them sometime in the last week of November. Our schedules just haven't been matching up, and to address Commissioner Bailey's concerns, and to try to provide a more thorough response to this and the other airport-related issues that Ternigan Community Council commented on. But you will be seeing that in December, starting on December 5th. Thank you.
So that's postponed from tonight's update?
Just as a comment, because especially since I won't be here at those December meetings, I think one thing that might be helpful is to look at this area kind of in a similar way that you drafted the UMED district plan. I think a possible solution could be to add a statement to page 40 that is somewhat similar to the paragraph four that you added to the UMED district. I think that would do a better job of capturing the history and the aspirational notions of what the council wants included. I think that would, those are my main comments. If you wanted me to draft up a proposed solution, I would be able to do that as well, but I did not, I wanted to wait till I heard the comments, and since I probably won't hear the comments, I can draft something up in the next couple of days and send to you for incorporation.
We would be happy to receive any language or suggestions that you provide and can include that in issue-response. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Mr. Spring?
Yeah, I think I might be overreaching here, but I'm okay, I mean, I think you're approaching the issue in the right way, consulting with Ternigan Community Council. approaching the issue in the right way, consulting with Ternigan Community Council. But I don't think anybody's going to readily accept the need for a second runway, north-south runway, without really having a part in the review of the need for the north-south runway. I mean, here it basically says, when the airport says we need to have north-south runway, we're going to put in a north-south runway. And I think their latest master plan was really good as far as their projections. I reviewed them, and I think it was fairly reasonable. But that hasn't always been the case in the past. There were some of their projections in the past that have been really, really out there, and I don't know where they get their numbers, but the latest ones are good. Doesn't mean that the future ones are going to be good, and doesn't mean that everybody's going to agree on the north-south runway need and whatever they come up with. So, I'm a little concerned about just giving them carte blanche, okay, to say that we need north-south runway, so then we'll, the alternative here says we, they can do it. So I don't know how I deal with it, but.
I don't know that we're going to debate the causal approach as to what the airport might deem they need or not, and look at the role that the planning and zoning takes in that determination and/or acquiesce, or are we for informational purposes only when the airport manages that expansion, if and when? Because it's my understanding, I think there's some consensus within others that that is not something that we're going to have any control over. We may be in the informational side of the loop, but we're not going to, they're not coming to us for permission. Ms. Bailey?
It's hard for me to address this without that follow-up happening, but I do think it is, I think Commissioner Spring brought up a good point, that it, the way that it's phrased makes it appear very one-sided, especially since the land trade area that's talked is municipal-owned. And so I don't think it's as cut and dry as some may think, and I think there are complexities there. And I think the planning staff is on the right track with going to talk to the community council to talk about that, and I think bringing in some of that historical context and, again, just reiterating that I think you did a very good job compromising that with the UMed district plan, and I would look forward to something similar regarding this area.
Mr. Walker?
I think we're getting down in the weeds here, but I'm going to say this. I guess I'm going to throw my counterpoint in, which is, the airport was there first. It's one of the busiest cargo airports in the entire world, and especially the country. And so I guess I think it would be not just the tail wagging the dog to let the community council pigeonhole the airport into some particular development methodology, but I think it'd be like a single hair on the tail of the dog, wagging the dog. So, I have real concerns about that. I'd love to hear what the community council has to say, but I just don't think it'd be a good idea to box the airport.
And I'm not going to echo that, but I think the discussion that you have with the community council and the fact that you have the airport that has been willing to discuss so that it's not a one-size-fit-them, that there is some open discussion for some trade-offs that can occur, but this is a tough topic, it's a hot topic, and it's not one we're going to resolve in this session and in this commission.
Through, Mr. Chair, if I could add to that, it's, maybe our language is too simple, and it was never our intention to make this seem like a slam dunk, future action that's going to happen, nor do we intend to mean it was a simple action. Our language, I thought, was intended to show, assumes that there will be a serious, robust process that the community and the airport and FAA will go through before anyone agrees that that runway will be needed. And there are, through the federal regulations, milestones and schedules and thresholds that have to be met. But we needed to acknowledge that that's a possibility, especially since it's in the airport's master plan.
And we need to acknowledge the role of the community council and applying their concerns to the topic in an appropriate manner that is, can benefit the community as best we can. And I think that's the step that you're attempting to take here. So that meeting that you have, it's good luck. I mean, and hopefully, but we're looking forward to the update.
All right, thank you. The Anchorage Coastal Wildlife Refuge, it's the boundaries of the Anchorage Bowl Planning Area on your map, or the Land Use Plan Map. You can, precedent is Chugatch State Park, off in the southeast corner, is a rather jagged boundary. And with this plan, we've done a lot of research to determine the boundaries of another state-managed open space, Anchorage Coastal Wildlife Refuge, and which basically is the reason why the boundary of the Bowl Land Use Plan area, subject to this plan, jigs and jags along the southeast coast. We received a fair amount of comments regarding this. They tended to be in the realm of requesting that we be more accurate and double-check our accuracy as to where the boundary is, requesting that any parcels within the Anchorage Coastal Wildlife Refuge area, regardless of ownership, private or municipal, also be designated or included within the coastal refuge and designated as open space. And then also some requests about language, about public access to that. We've double-checked and rechecked the boundaries, and we believe at this point they're accurate. The Land Use Plan Map boundaries, only, the only areas of the Coastal Wildlife Refuge outside of the Bowl boundaries, Land Use Plan Boundary, are the state-owned lands within the Anchorage Coastal Wildlife Refuge. We've attempted to clarify that on page 50 in describing the Land Use Plan Area Boundary. So if it's a municipal property, or in some cases, a private property, that's within the Anchorage Bowl Land Use Planning Management Area. If it's a municipal property in the Anchorage Coastal Wildlife Refuge, we designate it on the Land Use Plan Map as park or natural area. And there are a couple of those properties. If it's private land and it's upland and is developable and it's zoned residential, Land Use Plan Map designates it as residential, basically as the zoning district it's in. And so there are, in fact, a couple of properties, privately owned, that are within this boundaries of the Coastal Wildlife Refuge. But those properties do have their development rights. We do anticipate they will continue to be residential, and so we recommend those properties remain designated residential. And if it's, the Coastal Wildlife Refuge boundary is off in the water or off the map a bit, we don't show it. The best place to look in the Land Use Plan Map materials for the actual boundary of the Coastal Wildlife Refuge will be in one of our map folio maps, CI-5, Parks and Open Spaces. It's a fabulous map, and it's also on the map gallery. You can zoom in. This is a three-way partnership between AWU GIS, the Parks Department, and Planning, and it has documented where all our open spaces are in the Bowl and what the ownerships are and the types of parks they are. Based on the public comment, we're going to put the Coastal Wildlife Refuge boundaries on that map more clearly and more accurately. That way, we have public documentation of where the statutory boundaries are. Thank you.
Any comments from the commission? Seeing none. Moving from left to right. Consensus, consensus, moving forward. Thank you. Just as I look in the audience here for a moment, do we have any students here from government classes that are here to get their notes signed? Are you supposed to be here for a certain period of time, or, I'm sure your parents are wondering, hey, what time are they going to be home? I'll tell you what, if you're willing to come up here and give us your name, we'll get your things signed so that you don't have to be totally labor here for the whole evening. Fair enough? Sorry. You okay with that? So you will be able to tell your teacher you had to stand up before the commission and give us your name and what class you're in? What school? Okay, you have a drive to get home to, so let's get you home. Thank you. Where do you want us to sign? And you can take it to any of the other commissioners here as well.
Ask them what they learned tonight.
Are you all from Eagle River? Okay. Please drive home carefully. Thank you, staff. Just give us a few more moments here and we'll. Thank you again. Do drive home carefully. Okay, moving on to three F.
Mr. Potter, did you need a signature?
Any other signatures needed by anyone else in the audience, community council members? There we go. Three F.
Three F. Three F has to do with the Greenway Supported Development Corridors. These are the linear corridors going through our town centers and city center redevelopment areas, and we had a comment about this from the Watersheds Commission. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Tobish. Thank you.
Through the chair, the Watershed Commission deliberated quite a bit on this plan, but focused mainly on this Greenway Supported Development Corridor overlay, especially the linear one that's described on page 45 in the plan. And their main concern was, they liked the idea, they liked the concept, they liked how it was going to be used to catalyze redevelopment possibly, but also to enhance streams that may be underground right now. Their main issue was, can it happen and is there enough oomph in the plan to make it happen? And so, at this point, the best we could do was modify action item eight dash one, which is on page 64 in the back of the plan. So we've made some additional language changes to the text, and they're underlined for you. We thought that that was a good idea to enhance that action and give a little more enabling policy to staff.
Mr. Walker?
Yeah, I'm not trying to get ahead of myself here, but three I, I guess I was hoping maybe you could reconcile three I and three F for me. You know, three F, you seemed to be trying to basically open up streams, you know, and incentivize opening up those stream channels by narrowing the setbacks. And then three I, we're talking about widening the setbacks. So I just, I kind of wanted to talk about those two things together.
Good.
Excellent question. So the story behind the Greenway Corridor is where a Greenway would include a restored creek. We need to acknowledge that it's an urban creek and that it can't function with a huge setback necessarily by its nature. So, we're actually, three I talks about the Stream Protection Ordinance relative to the Hillside District. And the concern from the community council there was that the Stream Protection Ordinance that hasn't gone forward yet might decrease the stated setback for the Hillside area, which is 50 feet for all the streams. So that's, that's the difference.
Okay, so basically, three I is there to make sure that we're not rolling anything back with three F, more or less, as far as it applies to the Hillside at least.
Through the chair, actually, they're not really related.
Okay. So now, all right, well, we'll get to three I then, so thank you for your answer.
Ms. Barker?
At the risk of micromanaging and wordsmithing, I hate to see you limit us to pursuing state and federal grants and bonding. Kind of recommend some language, basically say pursue financial resources, which might include state and federal grants and bonding. Yeah, we've had some wonderful things done in our city through private foundations.
That's an excellent idea.
That's a good motion.
Thank you.
Mitzi, would rural cap be willing to throw in some money to help open up some creeks?
Yeah, sure. It provides a free labor.
Ms. Bailey?
I'm not sure if this is the correct section to weigh in on this. I don't really oppose any of the amendments here. I think they're good. I just still am having a little confusion with the GSD. I think it would help if it was broken out into, or categorized in three different ways. It seems like you're talking, and this is, I could be wrong in my interpretation of this, but it seems like you're talking first about enhancing current corridors that we have, possibly building more corridors, and then also a third portion of that would be encouraging development along those corridors. And I think that, or at least I'm kind of hoping that that's the plan. And so I think more clarification on what GSD is would be helpful for me, because to me, those involve very different action plans. And so that might be helpful. Kind of on that topic again, I wasn't sure if you, it somewhat seems like you're talking about expanding the corridors along Fish Creek, but was wondering if you looked into possibly creating more of a green network around West Chester Lagoon that would circumference the whole lake, or if you're looking at doing other lake projects like that. I think Anchorage might be one of the first cities I've lived in where trails don't actually go around the lakes. And so, I was wondering if any of those ideas were things you've considered, or if you think those are outside of the bounds of what you're trying to do, or if they're too specific. But I think I just still haven't gotten a good enough idea. I feel like I know what you want to say about Greenway Support Development, I just don't feel it's completely clear.
Thank you.
Yes, we appreciate that comment, and we're also looking at comments from folks out in the public and maybe returning on action item to try and provide some clarification to some of the language in that. on action item to try and provide some clarification to some of the language in that section. Thank you.
So if you look on the map, it's on page 67, that shows essentially what we feel were the recommended priorities for the Greenway features, the linear Greenway features. And so for an example, Fish Creek is the one that we've talked about, it's a priority. We'd like to do, we're actually pursuing feasibility now to see if we can restore Fish Creek from where it is now underground in 36th Avenue to an above-ground channel roughly between Arctic and Minnesota. It would be coupled with the redevelopment project, a large redevelopment project, but it would be a major enhancement to the redevelopment. And presumably would have a linear trail component to it. And that's an example where if we did that, there would be a creek, but it would not have, most likely would not have its standard setback, would be a reduced setback, more like an urban creek.
Are we talking about something similar that was done out on Muldoon to the park area there at the end of Dar?
Well, that's an example where the creek was restored to a larger channel in a larger floodplain area than existed before.
Mr. Spring.
The Huffman area, they objected, or they had some concerns about the feasibility of doing that in that area since it's completely built out. Are you going to address that separately, or is that?
Yes, in fact, that was one of the, there were three or four comments from a variety of perspectives about Greenway Support Corridor, and that was, their comment is right in there with the response that we're intending to build. So we will address their comment.
There's a fairly poor concept picture of urban Greenway on page 45 in the upper right. I think that's from a California example.
And not to put anyone on the spot, but Mr. Cecil has some connections to Idaho, where a small town there with an existing very urban downtown area is daylighting a creek right through their downtown. And I think we're looking to try and acquire some photos of that and other cases that can really evoke what this means much better than what we've got so far.
I would caution, I've been familiar with many of these cities that have done this, Texas, Arizona, parts of California, in that most of these had spillway control centers either upstream that mitigated the floodplain flood control issues. And so the expenditures that they would use upstream to mitigate, so that the last thing you want to do is put one of these in that floods out businesses as a result of a, even a 50-year occurrence. So very expensive, but part of a broader flood control planning. Mr. Spring.
Maybe we should just make this a question mark, since it sounds like we have some other, some more work to do on it, huh?
I'm okay with that. Staff, you follow the suggestion there? I don't think we're ready to have a consensus on this particular item at this point, is what I'm hearing from Mr. Spring.
Point of clarification, I think what, the latter part of this discussion is about the GSD in concept completely, right? It's not just this language on the action item.
Ms. Bailey.
3F is the action item.
Yeah, that was, I would agree with what you're saying, and I have no problem with 3F. I think my comments were more directed at GSD in general and thinking that maybe we needed more action items in 8 that addressed some other issues. But I'm not the only one, maybe other people had different ideas about that.
Mr. Walker.
This is a question for staff. Is the, I guess what, Ms. Bailey, I'm not putting words in your mouth, what she's experiencing is vagueness perhaps in the GSD, is that the result of the fact that we don't really know where the money's going to come from to do any of this, and we're just trying to leave the door open to have that option in the future?
Through the chair, we believe this action item is separate, and that the lack of clarity and the language is probably just us needing to go through and edit it some more so that the concept is clear. This action item is, I think, a separate issue.
Yeah, I anticipate our response to this discussion might go on page 45 in the section describing the designation.
I think we can take a look at a straw vote here, but Ms. Bailey has another comment.
I would be in favor, I would vote for 3F. I would then just ask for a separate item to go back to planning staff, where they look at possibly amending some of the language on 45, and then including some of that language to maybe add a new action number under goal number eight.
Thank you for that clarity, and I'm seeing a nod from staff. And with that, I'm going to consider that as a motion on the table to move this thing forward from Ms. Bailey with those recommendations. What is the consensus of the body?
We should include, if I may, Mitzi's edit there.
And she's contemplating the wording. What is that?
She said it.
Do we, so let's incorporate that. And staff, you have that? Then with those recommendations from Ms. Barker and Ms. Bailey, and the comments from Mr. Spring, I think we have a consensus from the commissioners. Mr. Spring is still contemplating. I don't see a thumbs up. There we go. And Mr. Sporhays is contemplating, there we go, we got a thumbs up. And with, so 3F, you have a consensus with those modifications, those addendums?
And just so that I'm clear, if Commissioner Barker could just read the beginning of the sentence as she has amended it, just to make sure that we've got the right language.
Basically, pursue financial resources, including state and federal grants and bonding.
3H was just a suggestion for the public to include riparian corridors in the list of the types of important natural features that should be addressed in goal eight. It seemed like a reasonable thing to include, so we do recommend adding riparian corridors, the stream corridor areas, to the list of important land features in the goal eight statement on page 16. I believe that's the bold goal eight statement. Thank you.
Seeing no comments, I think we have a consensus from the commissioners. Ms. Bailey, there we go. And Ms. Barker. Ms. Barker, there we go, we have a consensus. Thank you. Just trying to keep it moving forward. Thank you, 3I.
So I'll take that one. That's referencing comments from Hillside residents. It's sort of a two-part item. It's concerned that the language in action item 8.3 would end up diminishing the stream setbacks in the Hillside area, which are mandated by the Hillside District Plan at 50 feet on each side. So our response is that the current draft of the Stream Protection Ordinance, which will go to the Assembly sometime in the future, already acknowledges that Hillside's 50-foot setback, so there's no change with that. The second part of their comments asks that they, we have a new action item under goal eight that creates incentives for property owners to provide open space tracks and riparian corridors, and they're essentially in their larger tracks of land on the Hillside. And we did not recommend doing that action item for that. We feel that the Title 21 provides for that, either in general plating or in various types of subdivisions that are addressed on the Hillside. So we did not have any recommendation there.
Thank you. Mr. Walker.
So my question for Mr. Tobish, can you clarify, so the current setbacks on the Hillside are 50 feet?
Correct.
Okay. Now, what's the third sentence here? Besides the Hillside District Plan 50-foot setback policy, the Assembly envisioned an expansion of the current 25-foot setback area. So can you comment on that? What is the current 25-foot?
Sure, that's probably my fault for adding that confusion. I was just trying to clarify what the future Stream Protection Ordinance amendments will be doing. And right now, most of Anchorage, except for the Hillside, has a 25-foot standard stream setback.
Okay. And the proposal is to expand it to 50 feet citywide?
Partially. It's not that simple, but yes, that's, to simplify things, that's correct.
Okay. So I guess my concern, and maybe you can tell me, you know, address it, is I think there are a number of residential sites in Anchorage, and there's a handful, at least that I'm aware of, and probably more than that, you know, stream-fronting home sites that with a 50-foot setback would become undevelopable, whereas they're barely developable with a 25-foot setback. Is that, has some consideration been given to that?
Totally. That's why we're taking so long is to deal with non-standard lots like that.
Okay. And is it, so is the complexity of it, is it the size of the stream that's the issue then? If it's a big stream, it's a big setback, a little stream, a little setback?
That's part of the, that's part of the concept, is the larger the stream, the larger the setback, going up to river size, of course. And, but it's also lot size, we have to account for lot size and floodplain and that type of thing. And we've, where we've, to make it simpler, where we've recommended expanding the setback to 50 feet, there's provision in the outer 25 feet for land uses other than just pure preservation.
Now, can you correct me? I'm maybe recalling this wrong, but I was looking at the code a while back, and I want to say that I saw something about a 40-foot stream setback. Is that, am I remembering that correctly?
I don't think there's a 40-foot in the current code.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And I would like to add that, you know, your responses, the written responses you have in these handouts are important, they've been very helpful, and they become quasi-part of the record. So if there's a piece that you are updating for clarification, or that was, when you made an earlier comment, that that was part of my confusion or whatever, I would encourage that we correct that in the responses so that we have a record as to how these were, how these items progress through the system, so to speak, and not leave that confusion to last and linger out there for the future, for future readers to take a look.
Yeah, thank you, that's good.
And Mr. Walker, you're done? Thank you. And will of the body, as I move from Mr. Spring. Good, good. Okay. Thank you. 3J.
Through the chair, John Cecil. So I have this one, and 3J relates to the issue of fair housing. And the department, staff from the department met with representatives from the Alaska Housing Finance Corporation, I believe about a year ago, and we discussed about this very issue. And then over time, up until your last meeting, when there were representatives from the Housing and Neighborhood Development Commission, as well as a representative from the Fairview Community Council, spoke about this issue and the impact fair housing has on both the neighborhoods and Anchorage as a whole in terms of providing fair housing opportunities. And so we tried to respond to those concerns and those issues, which we acknowledge. And in fact, you know, the municipality in terms of receiving HUD funding from the federal government, you know, has to make certifications on fair housing in response to receiving those funds. So this is, our response is more of an acknowledgement that this isn't an important issue, especially in light of the Supreme Court case that happened, I think, last year. So we didn't necessarily see the need for any additional changes, but we're certainly open to suggestions or recommendations if you have any.
Thank you. And I knew Ms. Barker would have commentary on this one, as our local representative on the commission for this topic.
Great, so I'm not sure exactly where we go with this and whether we can resolve it tonight. I think it's something we maybe need to take back and do some more technical work on. You're probably aware that there are new HUD regulations that were sometime in the making, that have just recently actually gone into final rule and effect, requiring communities to affirmatively further fair housing. The commentary from the community council and that was presented in the public hearing kind of makes us often made this equation that fair housing referred to supportive housing. And I think we all know that it's a broader issue than that. And when I talked earlier about the land use plan being an aspirational plan, I think one of the things we really need to take a look at in terms of responding to this is what actually is the spatial distribution of the areas which the land use plan is looking at for potential future development of higher-density housing, which might support some at a more affordable price point. And that's totally separate from the issue of supportive housing, which was, you know, is an often heard refrain from some of the neighborhoods in the northern tier of the cities. And in fact, I mean, you know, with where I work, and I spend a third of my life there in Fairview as well, so I'm very familiar with it. So I'm wondering if it might be appropriate if we could maybe have some technical sidebar on this later, so maybe we could make sure that for the city's benefit, that we've appropriately addressed kind of all of the newer, more emerging issues with respect to affirmatively furthering fair housing and fostering more connection back to the folks in the Health Department, who are attempting to actually write a federally mandated plan that goes quite a bit further than what we're talking about here, and again, really has to link to what those aspirational goals are on the land use map and beyond, actually, which we, I don't know whether you know or not, I was also part of the team that wrote the APA Housing Policy Guide in 2006, and a couple of the earlier ones. The new HUD regulations actually mandate that cities coordinate with each other, which is difficult considering our kind of unusual separation between us and the Matsuburu, for instance. But technically, we're required now to coordinate with them on fair housing issues. So it's something we think we just all need to sit down and take a look at in a technical context to make sure that we cover it in the plan and not accidentally stub our toe here.
Through the chair, Commissioner Barker, I, you know, this is an ongoing educational lesson for all of us, particularly myself, on the, you know, federal housing issues. But your point is well-taken about the work that HUD has done. There's new maps, and we initially had thought about this, you know, the spatial distribution, as you refer to it, to try and make a story map with that information, because there's a lot of new information. a lot of new information from HUD. We just essentially ran out of time. But we, we are, we know that that information is there, and we would welcome, you know, getting some, some more information to make this more robust, to, to address this issue. So, we can, we can go back and work on that, and have a sidebar conversation, we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Spring?
I appreciate Commissioner Barker's comments. I hadn't really thought about this, in terms of how the land use plan might affect housing discrimination or concentration of housing in certain areas. It seems like maybe when we approve this plan, we should make, as part of our findings, that this meets the intent of the HUD fair housing, and doesn't affirmatively further fair housing, or does affirmatively further fair housing choice. And to do that, I think that should be part of our findings and our conclusion, don't you think? I mean, somebody needs to put that on the record, because if they go back and look at this, and find, well, they didn't really, you know, they didn't even talk about it, or they didn't have any comment on it. I don't know how you do that with a map, though, that's, maybe your staff could, you know, like you said, maybe prepare a technical, just a brief report relating to how this might relate to the fair housing.
I guess my thinking on that, John, is that the, with that Supreme Court ruling, that it's the outcome that's outlawed, not the intention. So we can have the best of intentions, but as it states, the Supreme Court ruling effectively outlawed discriminatory outcomes. So you can have the best of intentions, and still be discriminatory.
Well, I'm, I'm over my head already, so, I, it's a complicated issue, and I, I don't have the answers, but it, it does seem like it wouldn't hurt to be able to state that as part of our recommendation, but I guess I'll leave that up to people that know more.
But as it stands now, the staff has no additional additions to that, other than the clarifications that it provided?
Through the chair, not at this current time, no, but I think with the comments from Commissioner Barker, and then Mr., Commissioner Spring, I think we can massage this to reflect those concerns and the intent, that, you know, that the plan is supportive and, you know, moves, moves in the direction of, of what we're hearing now from HUD.
In that best foot, again, putting the best foot forward.
Yeah.
Okay. With the changes recommended, and the additional move forward, I believe we're good with moving off this topic, but is this something that we come back to now? So therefore, we would table this particular item.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anyone need a break, besides Mr. Walker? Can we, let's take about a five-minute quick break here, if that's okay. We're waiting for Ms. Barker to join back in, but we can start now on, I think we're on 3K, and I note that there are some new additional recommendations by staff on this particular, everyone has this in front of them, so. I think they're drawing straws to see who's going to take this one.
I will.
Okay.
So actually, if we could combine 3K and 3L, because they're, they're related. There's two things to distinguish here, and it's in, it's written in the response. One action item, these are referring to actions, action items under Goal Eight. One action item is essentially a housekeeping, area-wide rezoning for parks that are designated, sorry, dedicated, formerly dedicated parks. It's an action item to change all of their zonings to be consistent to PR. Right now, they're scattered all around town, and some of them have split zoning and wrong zoning, so that's Item 1 in 8-4. In 8-8, we've created another concept for essentially checking the zoning of parks, and it instead recommends that city evaluate all non-dedicated parkland, to determine the highest and best public use, which may not include future use as a park. And I can't remember, I'd have to look what the timeframe was. It's down the road, it's four to six years.
And as you combine these, are any, I, I noticed that Rabbit Creek Community Council weighed in on both. Any idea as to the intent, or any other discussions, on the concern on 3L, as to why their desire to remove the potential?
Yes. Through the chair, the Rabbit Creek Council, as I understood it, or the, especially the public comment, was that these are parks, we should just get it over with and dedicate them all as parks.
Repeat that?
Their concern was that these are already parkland, and they were, we shouldn't be quibbling about dedicated versus designated, and they should all be simply made as future parkland.
Just to add a little further context on that, I was on the Federation of Community Councils when this was brought up, and this wasn't just an area that Rabbit Creek Community Council had an interest in, so while they made the formal comment, I don't know if it was ever, I think I left the FCC before, kind of around the time that it was introduced, and multiple community councils kind of latched on to this, but I'm not sure if it was chosen to done, to be done informally between each community council, if they were considered an area-wide, but just context that it wasn't just Rabbit Creek.
Mr. Spring? As we're looking at both of these, what is the will of the commission as to the staff recommendations to 3K and 3L? Thank you. Pardon me? She's good. Okay. Thank you.
Next item is 3M, Municipal Wetland Bank. We had a couple of comments that objected to the concept, in principle, mostly, that the municipality shouldn't be in the business of creating and actively working a mitigation bank for wetlands. And in our response, we highlight the reason why we're into this. The municipality, through the Heritage Land Bank, has been pursuing a mitigation bank on their lands, which are wetlands in Anchorage, for almost 10 years now, working through the very complicated Corps of Engineer process, to meet their standards, to get the bank approved. Running a mitigation bank costs money, mostly because your upfront costs include providing the conservation easement, which preserves the land formally. That has a cost. There's also management costs involved, so funds have to be generated to do that, first of all, and second of all, leftover funds from those accounts would be used to buy other wetlands in need of preservation or restoration around Anchorage. So we recommend no changes.
Which, which leaves intact the approach for the bank, in order to be in a position to swap out properties within the municipality pursuant to the Corps of Engineers?
You're talking about adding, essentially, land swaps to the bank process?
In, in and out?
Yes. Yes.
And that's still the intent for the municipality? That's still your intent?
That's still one of the intents, yeah.
No, having sat on the Wetlands Commission and so forth, that's a valuable tool that has allowed other projects that would stall to be able to move forward.
Yes, part of the, part of the function would be providing mitigation credits to municipal entities that are requiring Corps permits.
Yep. Okay. Mr. Spring?
Well, I think it's, your comments are, you addressed the comments very well. I wasn't sure what the comments were, though. I looked up the Rabbit Creek Community Council discussion, and I didn't see anything in there about Wetlands Bank. What is their issue? There must be some reason why they opposed it.
Through the chair, it's similar to their concerns with the park issue. They feel that if the municipality has important wetlands in our holdings, that we should just preserve them out of principle, if they're not to be developed. No.
And how would this prevent that from being done?
This is essentially the municipality being involved with transactions, rather than just simply dedicating them as preserved wetlands.
Okay. I, I'm still not sure what their objection.
Mr. Sporhays?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. This just refers to municipality properties, correct? Municipal does not refer to private ownership wetlands?
That's correct. HLB lands especially would be involved.
Mr. Walker? Would, if the municipality did establish a wetland bank, would they sell credits to private developers for developments on other sites that weren't owned by the muni, or projects that weren't associated with the muni? Or would this be entirely credits that were utilized for municipal projects by the municipality?
Through the chair, all of those actions you refer are part of the agreement that the municipality would end up having with the Corps of Engineers, but most likely, yes, they could sell credits to municipal entities or private developers.
What about land outside of the direct control? What about university land? What about airport lands? Any of these properties able to be identified in the bank for future credit use?
Other properties outside the muni would have to be in their own agreement with the Corps of Engineers. For instance, the airport has somewhat of a similar agreement with the Corps of Engineers for some of their wetlands.
Okay.
But it's essentially a different bank entity.
Is this the competing bank situation that is being referred to?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that clarity. Mr. Walker, you still in the queue? Mr. Sporhays?
Yeah, thank you. For your last comment, you mentioned if it was outside the municipality, is that outside the boundaries of the municipality, say Wassillo Palmer, or would that be a separate agreement with the Corps?
Essentially, anyone could enter into an agreement with the Corps of Engineers for a mitigation bank, with their own wetlands. There's a, there's a mitigation bank in existence now, in Turnigan Arm, on the Redmond property. There's, Great Land Trust has a mitigation bank in Anchorage. Jerry Harmon Land has a mitigation bank, so the sky's the limit.
Thank you.
Moving down the line, Mr. Spring has got a thumbs up. Looks like we're good, and we have a debate going on here on the left. No, there we go. Thank you. You gotta have some fun at this.
We are leaping ahead to page 20 of your issue response, the bottom of the page, Item 4E. 4E is the next green item.
Could, could, Mr. Chair, could I make a comment on 4A real quick? Okay, yeah. Yeah, I just want to make a recommendation to, as quickly as possible, address this one and discard it, because I don't think it makes much, I think DOT did probably not understand what you meant by the word accessibility, and they misinterpreted the mean access management, and that's really clearly not the intent of what this plan was addressing. I, I would just recommend addressing it as quickly as possible, and not making any changes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the, the comment I had written down to my notes here, and this goes back a ways, but my question that I wrote is, do we prioritize arterials, and do we have that listed someplace? I'm, I'm sure we do, and I'm just, these were notations I had made to myself, but as we look at these, we look at accessibility, we look at the boundaries, but identifying the arterials that we are prioritizing, that would help, because I'm looking forward, as we look at certain land use, as we look at certain zoning changes, as we look at traffic plans that come down the road. We looked at one here this past week even, on Tudor Road, and one of our comments was traffic backup on Tudor. Now, where does that fit within the arterial equation? And that's a rhetorical question I just put out there to the, to the staff. It's just a question mark. So, without seeing, Mr. Spring, are you still in the queue? So moving forward.
If I could just add on, 4B is very similar, I think, in my opinion, maintenance, but a little bit different. Maintenance and operation for complete streets, I mean, that should not be the driving determination. Sure, they're going to be, there's always going to be some maintenance, and, you know, it's very clear that DOT doesn't want to maintain sidewalks, and everybody knows that or landscaping, but I don't think there's a need to make any changes to that either, to respond to it.
I believe we are on 4E, and that did have some recommended changes from the staff.
Yes, 4E is, staff acknowledges that the, kind of a technical correction be made, just to clarify that we are coordinating between state, local agencies, and, in our various capital improvement programs, and so we've added some language to clarify that at DOT's advice.
Very good. Commission, we good with that? I think you got thumbs up. Thank you.
Can I make one other backtrack real quick? 4D, another comment by DOT regarding illustrative projects. Again, I think they misunderstood what the language was, what they're trying to communicate in the plan. They think illustrative means, according to the MTP, the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, and I think the staff was, in their report, was just trying to say that this map just illustrates the general location of the, of it, not, not, and it didn't refer to whether or not it was in the plan or not. Does that make sense? I mean, I don't think it's a very substantial comment, and I wouldn't spend a lot of time on it, and.
I think Mr. Spring is trying to help you out there, as you look at your TBD for that, so you can be a little bit more expeditious. Thank you, Mr. Spring. 4G, and as I look, we have a response, but no changes recommended. So let's take a look.
Yes, 4G, this is, this is a transit-supported development corridor, and it appears as a hatchmark that appears along Northern Lights Boulevard. Northern Lights, basically, it west Northern Lights, from the, a little bit west of Spinar Town Center, through the east end of the midtown commercial area, and then it peaks up again for a brief period, focused around Boniface, but again, along Northern Lights. for a brief period focused around Boniface, but again along Northern Lights. The Public Transit Department requested this corridor, and this coordinates with the Public Transit's plans to reorganize its routes. Northern Lights, Benson, in both of their option proposals going forward to the public to culminate their Anchorage Talks transit plan, will increase the 15-minute headways. We believe that the segments, the land uses along these two segments of Northern Lights are opportunities to take advantage of those 15-minute headways. 15-minute headways is basically a national rule of thumb where the transit level of service becomes helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any question? Mr. Spring?
Yeah, well, thank you for, I appreciate you sending us that potential, the transit potential maps. I thought those were interesting, and I still, can I ask for a clarification? The, when you talk about Northern Lights transit-supported corridor, you call, say Northern Lights and Benson, it might mean when you state that in the plan that that's only the area in Midtown? The couplet, that involves the couplet? That's what you mean? You don't mean the entire Northern Lights corridor, then?
That's, that's correct. The, just the Northern Lights Benson, that's correct.
I guess I'm okay with what you've done there. I think maybe there, that couplet does have a lot of high-density housing around it, and there's a lot of office buildings, and that might be good. I don't believe, though, that the entire corridor really is gonna, I'm not sure it's gonna support 15-minute headways. I'm really concerned about that. I don't, so therefore, I'm not sure that that one quarter-mile area around Northern Lights and Boniface really makes sense as an isolated transit-supported development corridor. It's so isolated, and it's just one part of a two-mile-long corridor. It just seems like not gonna do much for you. I guess I would recommend maybe looking at it as another land use designation personally, but I'm gonna just go give thumbs up to that answer, I think, at this point. If you want to consider that suggestion, feel free. If not, that's fine.
John, I think that is a valid comment, and though, in trying to be expeditious at the same time, any comments that the staff might add in that context might be helpful in the future. But I see where John's coming from. It's just a small piece that disrupts the rest of that corridor, but a different designation.
If that's the case, then I would make that part of our approval, that they reconsider that one section and re-designate it to something else.
Because we are talking-
Maybe a neighborhood, a neighborhood commercial might be appropriate, and that would have basically the same effect as a transit-supported developmental corridor, but...
Move that forward. We good? Thank you. Thank you, though, for the comments, John. 4H, removal of transit-supported development corridor on Jewel Lake Road, and we do have some discussion there.
Yes, in a nutshell, with the growth rates we're looking at and the existing housing, the corridor looks mostly developed, and we don't see a whole lot of opportunity there to achieve the densities that would make this a corridor. And we're also where the Public Transit Department is weighing whether to even maintain fixed route, fixed schedules, fixed scheduled service here. So we recommend it to remove it. We did provide a map with your packet this weekend. It's the missing map that Public Transit provided to try and simplify through a heat map approach where the areas of town are, where there's the population and other land use features that support transit in town. And so this and other factors led us to recommend removing. Thank you.
Spring? I guess I'm kind of on the, I don't know what I'm going to recommend approval of, but, you know, one of the things about the, that guided the creation of the transit corridors was the connection of town centers also. I mean, it's not, they aren't in isolation. The idea was to connect town centers with transit corridors with employment centers. So here we got a town center supposedly at the intersection of Jewel Lake and Diamond, and there's no corridor there. Well, and they're just going to abandon the route potentially, you know? I don't know. Do we want to eliminate the town center too while we're at it? I mean, that was their concept, anyway. So you're taking part of the concept away here by saying, no, not gonna be a transit corridor. And I don't have any information to contradict you regarding the development potential of that corridor, but there are a lot of pretty high-density multifamily along Jewel Lake. And I bet you if you looked at it, you'd find that the density within a quarter-mile of that corridor is a lot higher than a lot of corridors in town. So, but I guess I'm gonna recommend keeping it. I talked myself into it there.
Ms. Bailey?
I too am in favor of keeping it, but I like the wording of making it be the lowest phasing priority among the transit-supported corridors.
Any other comments?
I'd like to see it kept in too, but I agree with the recommendation of phasing it as a lower priority. It is consistent with the town center concept.
So help me out here. Are we, we want to keep the town center concept, but the transportation corridor, we want to see brought back in to cover that, to be consistent with the town center? That's what I'm hearing. Is that what was said?
No, I must have misled you. No, the town center's still included in the land use plan map.
Right.
So it's not being eliminated under, they aren't recommending eliminating. But we were recommending keeping the transit corridor designation along Jewel Lake.
To, all the way through to Diamond?
Yes, yes.
Because it is not through Diamond now, is that correct? As I'm looking at your map, it stops short.
You know, we don't have any strong objection to bringing it back, and the funny thing about these corridors, they're land-use corridors, so it's okay if they stop short. It doesn't mean the bus is gonna stop, the bus is gonna shoot on through. This is just the segment of that bus route where there's transit-supported land use potential.
Well, that's how, that's how I look at it. The bus is gonna stop, and you're not getting to the town center.
Yeah, we recognize there's confusion there. We've attempted through this hatch pattern, this broad hatch pattern, to try to evoke the concept of land use. Our previous draft had a dotted line, and in response to public comments, we, that definitely looked like a route map. We're trying to get away from that.
I would rather have the five-minute discussion here rather than impose a public hearing at the Assembly and have a line going out the door talking about this particular bus route, or lack of. Because that's what you're, that's what will end up happening. And what is the, Mr. Spring, are you still in the queue?
Nope.
Okay.
I'm...
What is the will of the commission? Are we good with the, what was the recommendation?
The recommendation is to keep it the transit-supported development corridor along Jewel Lake, but make it the lower priority, the lowest priority.
And that is or is not in consensus with the recommendations by staff?
They left it up to us.
Okay. Okay. And were you able to incorporate that? Thank you. Okay with changes. 4I, airport compatibility overlay zone.
Yes, we believe that the concerns about this were mostly based on the lack of clarity in our language regarding this action item to create an airport interface compatibility zone. The West Anchors District Plan calls for this zone, and it's mostly an overlay to help form, inform property owners, potential buyers, and just to address noise. But it's also affecting Jay Bear, which is probably the more dangerous interface with land use, where basically you have a serious safety problem with residential under a military runway. So this interface compatibility zone, we've attempted to clarify what it's supposed to do as a means of addressing the concerns about it.
The, does this tie in to the meetings that you were looking to have with the Turnigan View, Turnigan Community Council on the other airport topics? Or is this part of the discussion that we might hear further, or is this totally separate and distinct? And I guess I would look to Ms. Bailey, is, do you see this as a parallel to those other two topics that they are meeting with? You've become our kind of in-house go-to.
I think they're tangentially related, but I think this is, can be dealt with separately.
Seeing no questions from the commission, how would you move? Very good. And Ms. Berger? Very good. Thank you. Mr. Spring, were you in the queue?
Yeah, I just wanted to interrupt the flow a little bit and discuss 5A.
5A, okay.
And just to ask staff, I think I mentioned, this was one of my comments, I think, and I'm not sure if I made it clear exactly what I was talking about. There's a, there's a city center downtown designation, right, in the land use classification map? And it includes an area in, between Ingra and Gamble and Third and, what's it, Third and Ninth, which is Zone B3. My comment was that it's currently, yeah, it's currently Zone B3. So is your intention to rezone that as a downtown zoning district?
Let me interrupt real quick here. Mr. Spring, do you have tonight's handout?
Oh.
Let's move to tonight's handout, because 5A is identified.
5A, that's right, thank you very much. So what was the answer, then? I'm not sure if I understood that answer. I looked at it real quick. What, is that, is that what you're, is you moving in that direction to make it a part of the downtown zoning district? I wasn't sure what you meant by that.
Well, the comprehensive plan designates pretty much everything west of Gamble as part of the downtown plan, which leads to eventually being rezoned from its current zoning districts to the downtown DT districts. There's a bit of RO that extends west from Gamble, and so that that area is designated in the comprehensive plan to, yes, be eventually changed over to a downtown district. East of Gamble to Ingra, the comprehensive plan also designates that area as major city center, right now established in the adopted Fairview Plan. Fairview Plan extending downtown eastward from Gamble to Ingra. The Fairview Plan also calls for the downtown districts zoning to implement it. More of the area east of Gamble, between Gamble and Ingra, is zoned RO, strip of lots along Third Avenue, one lot deep, backing up to an alley. The other side of the alley, on the south side of the blocks facing Fourth Avenue, are some B3-zoned lots. And then, in fact, everything south of there in that corridor is zoned B3. So everything east of Gamble to Ingra is zoned either RO or B3, and our comprehensive plan designates it to be, become a zoning district to implement downtown, a downtown district. A downtown district would be preferable for, from a development standpoint, because the downtown zoning, whether the current B2A, B2B, what have you, or the downtown future zoning, the downtown-type zoning unleashes a lot more density potential for the property than, you know, a B3 or an RO, which are more suburban-style. So the intent is to, well, the comprehensive plan's already calling for it, that that area be, become zoned in a way that implements the downtown, and you know that the lock, block, lot pattern there, east of Gamble, is the same as west. You have a great grid block, great potential there. The issue right now, though, and we got a comment from Dowell, that the RO rule of lots facing Third Avenue, just one lot deep, backs up to an alley, and then everything south of it is zoned B3. So if we had downtown districts available, we would say, well, we can just, if the, if the property owner is interested in a near-term rezoning, we could rezone them to the downtown districts. All we have left right now is the B2A, or how we have available now is the B2A, B2B, B2C districts. Rzoning to those districts would be fine, but they're not available. We can't rezone to those districts east of Gamble. They only apply where they exist today, and they only live in the old Title 21. Those RO and B3 lots, they live in the new Title 21, and there's no B2A, B2C available. So we looked at, we looked at the RO, we looked at the B3, you know, whether they're zoned one way or the other, they still, they're still one lot deep. They have this alley behind them. You have this 140-foot-deep lot, and you have a 20-foot public alley, and then you have the next zone over. And either the B3 or RO would be, you know, on a similar challenge there with lots width and depth. The difference there is the allowed use and the potential height issues they have. We have a near-term solution in, built into the land use plan map, and essentially, what we're looking at is, we'd like to get to a DT district, we'd like to completely rewrite the downtown code, but that's not feasible in the next year or two. However, Action 3-2 in the plan is sort of a shortcut to retire those old districts out of the old code, so we're all using the same code again. Basically, to simply reformat the B2A, B2B, B2C regulations into the language and format of the new code as a project, as an initial project to begin the migration of downtown to DT districts. And that project is a near-term project that we, we've talked with the Office of Economic and Community Development, and they, they really support it in terms of a very near-term initial step to make the new code available to properties in downtown. For example, the way you measure height in the new code actually benefits property owners For example, the way you measure height in the new code actually benefits property owners along the L Street area who want to develop along the slope. There are, so there are benefits to the new code that taking these B2A, B2B, B2C district regulations, formatting them into the new code with, primarily as a non-substantive measure, would, would be a very near-term action item. And as part of that, would allow us to implement land use designations east of Fairview, making that type of zoning available to the properties east of Gamble Street in the very near term. The comprehensive plan calls for the future zoning of that area to be downtown oriented. The problem is, right now, we don't have a downtown district available. Action 3-2 is cutting through hyperspace to get us to that point real quick, like, thank you.
One, one comment. Is this an opportunity to, all good what you said. I mean, I'm hearing word near-term, transition, move towards, interim, and the end result, what we can't get to, but we have to use these interim steps. Where do we document in this plan where we want to go but can't? I don't, I didn't see that really spelled out in the response. But I think that is an excellent baseline from which, to operate from in the future as we look backwards, how did we get where we're at and where are we going? Because if this truly is an interim progressive step to get to that downtown district that you're looking for, for ultimately rezone, somebody's going to come along first. Somebody's going to come around, along with the perfect lot, with the perfect section, you're going to go, well, that's where we want to go, but we can't get there. How do we, how do we get there? Baby steps, I get it. But none of those get us to the end game. But somebody's going to come around first, and we're going to block them with a full-court press and say, you can't get there from here. But here we have the intent. We want to help them. But I guess I'm just looking for language in the response area that helps us, when planning and zoning looks in the future, to see what the future intent is. How do we help them get there and help you get there with some of this possible rezoning options that could come forth? Did I, am I misconstruing this at all, or?
Well, I, I, I'm not sure if I totally understand the, the comment.
Neither do.
The end state, the end goal is, is a later action. It's also on page 61. So Action 3-2 is amend to reformat these districts. But Action 3-6 is, is the, the end goal is, is a more comprehensive revision to the downtown zoning regulations to fully implement the downtown plan.
I guess I'd like to see the intent identified there for future reference. That would help future commissioners, future folks sitting in your spot, to have an understanding of where it is that we're intending to go.
Okay, thank you.
In the response. Mr. Walker.
So, am I understanding you correctly when you say amend to reformat 2A, 2B, and 2C? So we're going to format those zoning designations into the new Title 21, but they would not be available to rezone to? Is that, is that an accurate description of what you just said?
The first part is accurate. We would make them available to rezone to. So, for example, that area designated in the Fairview Plan to be major city center, that area would suddenly have available to it these reformatted districts.
Okay.
And as we wrote the response, we realized, well, if this area is, it happens to be in the northern end of one of our three reinvestment focus areas, reinvestment focus areas, it's one of the top three RFAs. Typically, in those areas, if we want to implement the plan, we would do a targeted area rezoning, just like we're talking about other parts, like down in Middle Spinard, where property owners wouldn't have to do the rezoning. We would carry it out for them if they support it.
Right. So how did we, how did B2A, B2B, and B2C get left behind here? Is it, I mean, obviously, there's not a lot of rezoning going on downtown because it's, downtown is downtown, and there's not as many changes going on down there. It's pretty densely developed. How do these get left behind, or what's the story there?
In 2007, we adopted the Anchorage Downtown Comprehensive Plan. The project's immediate next objective was to write and adopt the DT districts immediately after that. So the, the concept behind not including the downtown districts in the Title 21 rewrite was that we were going to take care of them separately and quickly, right after the downtown plan was adopted. That didn't happen, so we are left with a donut hole in the new code. And the Assembly's Band-Aid solution was to, for the downtown area currently zoned in those three districts, that they are subject in entirety to the old Title 21. So by reformatting them to the new code, we get them out of the old code, get them into the new.
Okay. I understand now. Thank you.
Mr. Spring.
Yeah, so the RO zoning area, is that in the city center?
Yes.
Okay, so eventually, there'd be the possibility of rezoning into the new downtown districts. Second point, the map, current map that you have outlining the areas of change, I don't believe that it has anything showing that there'll be a zone change in this area. It doesn't show, I mean, if you're trying to find areas that might be subject to change, I don't think the dash lines include this area, and it probably needs to be amended to show that.
I just saw it. I think you're correct. Yeah, thank you.
Seeing no further questions, what is the will of the body? And we are concurring with the amended 5A on tonight's agenda, correct? Ms. Bailey? Mr. Walker? You don't get to copy her vote. You got to do it all on your own.
Well, no, I thought she was going first, so I was going to give her the chance to, yeah, I'm fine with it as proposed, so.
And now we're down to the end on the left, with the gentleman standing. There we go. Okay, thank you. The, that takes us to 5B, even though it is not green. I had one question, and I guess this was back, a question I had to Mr. Spring. And that was, you had made a comment that Gamble Street between Fifth and Fifteenth cannot become a Main Street corridor unless it is reduced from four to three lanes. Was that your comment?
Yes.
I vaguely recall a DOT presentation talking about the four to three, but why, I don't recall that not becoming, it couldn't become a Main Street corridor unless it was three lanes.
Well, I mean, that's the idea of a Main Street corridor, is to have sidewalks and some separation from traffic.
Which there are.
What's that?
There's sidewalks.
Yeah, there, there's sidewalks there. But I think the idea was to make it more pedestrian-friendly and have some streetscaping and that type of thing along there to make it more attractive. And we dealt with this issue in the Fairview Plan.
Right.
DOT was really adamant about, and I don't always agree with DOT, I can tell you that, but about changing one of their National Highway System roads into Main Street. And I think we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves, possibly, because I think it's a, it's a transportation issue. We need to resolve the transportation issue first before we designate it to Main Street. But, because I don't think it works, Main Street don't work on a National Highway System road.
Well, it is still an outstanding item. It's yellow and it's TBD. So let's go ahead and move forward to 5C.
Actually, that's mine. Thank you. Through the chair, so we, staff had received some input from some homeowner, as well as some other folks during the land use plan process, to potentially rezone some single-family properties in South addition to, to family, or to compact mixed residential low. And we researched that issue. We spoke with the Geotechnical Advisory Commission, which I assume you all know what their role is. And our, our recommendation, our response is, is in 5C, and we are not recommending that change, given the seismic hazard vulnerability and risk.
Any comments concern, Mr. Spring, you're in the queue. You're no longer in the queue. Anyone else with commentary? Mr. Walker.
I just flipped the page here and saw my notes. So I read through MMI's report a little bit. Is there any way to mitigate the risk at all?
Through the chair, Mr. Walker, I mean, yes, you can do a lot of engineering. It's, you know, if you want to spend a lot of money to do that. I'm not sure that it would be justified in the case of, you know, compact mixed residential low. But it's, it's a matter of engineering and demonstrating to the, to building safety that a structure can be mitigated to the extent that it can.
Right. All right, that's, I guess that was my only thought, was if there were some, I didn't see any discussion of mitigation in there, but if there were, like, depilings or, you know, something like that, that maybe it'd open the door for this. But, thank you.
And I think a lot of those mitigation standards are already applicable, even to the medium-density aspect. And it's the higher-density determination they would like is what causes the concern. And, no, I concur with your recommendation for that area. I'm very familiar with the area. Mr. Walker, you in or out of the queue? Ms. Barker, in or out?
Yes, just briefly, I mean, in a kind of Bassacord's way, this furthers a fair housing goal of not subjecting lower-income people to being concentrated in areas of high environmental risk.
Through the chair, agreed, though I think in this particular case, it's not necessarily low-income, but.
No, I'm aware of that, with the notion of increasing density, we're, anyway, yeah, it's, I've had some trouble with this because frankly, I don't think we probably should have allowed this development in the first place.
Through the chair, I think the GAC would concur with that analysis.
Okay. We have a motion or will of the body down to the right, all good. Mr. Spring? And I think so to the left, very good. Okay, moving right along, 5E.
Through the chair, this is a bundle of lots, an isolated parcel of lots, east of the Alaska Railroad and north of Northern Lights. You can see it on your map. It's, it's an orange island inside of the yellow. And we heard from the community council and landowners there, sorry, just the landowners, that they didn't concur with our recommendation to call that compact mixed residential low. It's developed over the years as mostly single-family homes. And the intent for that type of development.
Can you speak up?
Sorry. The intent for that type of development was to retain the single-family home feature, like the areas across the street. We did review the rezoning, which they gave us the information for from 1979, 1980, where it went to R2D to reflect that land pattern. The land is handicapped by Fish Creek and a gully behind it with a floodplain, so that it can't really adapt to larger houses. So we concur with the landowner recommendation to drop it back down to the yellow or the single-family feature. While we were researching that, we also realized that there were two parcels west of the Alaska Railroad right-of-way, north of Northern Lights, that are currently zoned R3. So we're recommending to move those up from the yellow to that middle-orange color.
West of the railroad or south of the railroad?
West. The railroad runs north-south there.
West-east, okay.
So north of Northern Lights.
Mr. Spring.
Yeah, I, I agree with your comments there. Is the, okay, the Mobile Home Park's different, in a different comment?
Yes.
In that area? Okay.
Ms. Bailey.
I agree with all the work that was done here. I think this is a really good example of people in the community not just not wanting development because it impacts them, but that it's feasibly not possible. And I really liked how the staff looked at this. And I don't think every single area needs to look at every single parcel, but the work that was done here, I think it created a really good solution. So I like the recommendation.
Yeah, I would concur. Good work on this one, I believe. Okay, Mr. Walker. And to the left, the gentleman stands, there we go.
Mr. Chair, could I make a, go back one, just real quick, on the 5D, housing density and Chugashway.
Let's finish up here with 5C. I think we have total concurrence and we're good. Okay. So check 5.
Oh, 5D, the Chugashway.
Okay.
I know they're still working on it, but I'd like them to consider, I'm not sure this is the right place, but I'd like them to consider a special study area for this particular area. It's, there's some real problems with Chugashway right-of-way. Very narrow, no sidewalks. The city's looked at this quite a bit in the past, trying to figure out how to, how to reconstruct the road and get traffic moving well. And there's a problem with the light at Chugashway and Arctic, because it's too close to 36. So if you put all that density on Chugashway and try to get it out on the Arctic, you, there's a queue that backs up, and you can't make left-hand turns. And it seems like we really need, this might be a special study area that should, a special study that should be done prior to finalizing the land use designation here. And I'd just like the staff to kind of address that when they finalize the comments, is all.
And I would concur with that. And this has been a tough area, I've been familiar with that area probably for 40 years. And this has been a difficult area in town, both mixed up with mixed use, with businesses that operate right to the edge of the street, with pedestrian. And now it's a major shortcut between Spinard Road and getting over to Arctic. And it's, it was a mess 35 years ago. And it was a shortcut then. And it's, special attention, I think, is what the commission's looking at in this area. Is that fair statement, John? Thank you.
I can, I can, we can add a little bit to that. We concur that the area is uniquely situated for various problems and solutions. And we agree that it's in an RFA now. So one of the items we would pursue would probably be a small-area plan. We think there are possibilities to resolve the traffic issues and the Chugashway issues once the area redevelops to a larger situation.
And when I, when I looked at this area, and one of the comments I made on my opening packet, and it was something I had seen in other cities, and that was special tax districts. and it was something I had seen in other cities, and that was special tax districts. And when I look at that area, I look at that as a potential developer, developers, how do you attract developers to come in and combine two, three, four lots and incentivize them to move into this direction? And as I was looking at this area, I'm thinking, one map I didn't see, didn't recall seeing, was a area that we might want to look in the future for promoting tax incentives for development, to promote certain types of higher-density growth development and so forth. Something to think about, but this area comes to mind as an area that is, you know, you're right there on the edge of Spinard, but at the same time, you're in midtown, you've got access to Arctic. Great potential. Great potential. How do we incentivize this? How do we work this? Because it, this is an older area of town, again. So I think you have an opportunity here to really strike a chord and make a difference.
Just one more comment, Mr. Chair. Yeah, my problem is I don't like to get in situations where somebody comes in for a rezoning and we, it's designated as in land use plan map that higher-density, and then we have to figure out a way to make it work. And we don't have any information regarding the traffic impacts or if it's going to be there. And so I really like to avoid those situations where that happens. And I think the way to prevent that or preempt that is to do a special study and show how there might, I believe there probably are some connections, new street connections you can make, the 36 from Chugash. You've got to prove to me that you can expand, you can widen the right-of-way for Chugash. And if you do those things, I'm, I agree, it's a really exciting project.
And to paraphrase, I think what you're saying is, along the opportunity that this area has, that a piecemeal zoning changes may be more of a hindrance and hurt in the long-term than a sound, basic plan in this area. So we put, is that fair statement, John? Yeah, your study, okay, thank you. I believe we are on 5E.
We finished that.
We just finished that. Good. See how fast we're going? 6A.
Yes, this is the northwest corner of Tudor Road and Piper Street, where the land use plan map process followed on the UMed district plan and the proposed rezoning. The land use plan map process, again, related this to the housing need throughout the city and the need to maintain residential capacity in the neighborhood right around the UMed as much as possible. And our capacity analysis, while not finished, does indicate that the land use plan map does have trouble meeting the projected housing need at a moderate growth rate of 0.8% a year. And this recommendation is an attempt to allow mixed-use medical office, but preserve an amount of housing capacity there that is similar to that of what the former Mobile Home Park that once occupied the site, the R3 zone site, had at sort of an R3 minimum-type density, whether it's eight units dwelling units per acre or what have you. But it would basically lead to a type of ROSL, it would call for some kind of housing. And this, the timing is awkward, but the land use plan map, we're following the policies of the overall aspirational plan. And we suggest there's a possibility of changing from the current recommended designation indicating high-density housing with mixed-use to a lower-density residential designation that would also allow mixed-use with less housing. Thank you.
Well, we talked earlier about, I mean, I'm a little frustrated at myself. I guess I was thinking somebody else was going to propose the site plan review at our last meeting for this, the rezone of this property that we're talking about here. I wish that I had, and we could have put that to bed. I disagree with the notion that since this property is, happens to be zoned residential today because of, you know, the zoning map that was developed in the 70s sometime said it was residential, that doesn't necessarily mean that's what it should be forever. And I'm a little worried that this could be sort of a proxy for boxing that property into being zoned residential indefinitely. And even though it does have some residential on the one side of it, it's, that residential-zoned property is a church, which is basically a commercial use in my mind. And the market seems to be dictating commercial uses along that stretch of Tudor. So I'd be real reluctant with this to want to see that property get any kind of a future rezone blocked because of what we're doing here. So I guess I want to be wary of that.
Mr. Spohays.
Yeah, thank you. Wouldn't this be contingent upon what Assembly's action is, correct? This is the property we heard last week?
Yes, and let's be careful here this evening that we're not discussing a specific piece of property.
Okay.
And that's not the purpose of this meeting. And that was a, that was taken up by the commission, and it's moved forward then to, I believe, the Assembly. So we're not here to debate what happened, didn't happen in a particular case, although we have referenced particular cases as reference as we've moved forward on different plans, but not to the context and the detail to recast or rehash a previous decision. So that's not the purpose tonight, and we're not going to go there.
I agree. I guess I was just curious on the recommendation, if that would be changed. But I think you answered it. If it is changed at this, at that level, then it would be kind of prevailing what this plan is? Is that correct?
And I'm a little confused, too, on the recommendation here for this particular blurt. I mean, you're responding to a particular comment that has been made for a particular piece of property. And therein, therein was where I'm having the problem of, this isn't the means and methods to, I believe, to reopen a case for that discussion. And I guess I would look at direction from staff. This isn't a backwards approach to rehear a case, to discuss a case.
No, this is just for the land use plan map of 2040. So it would be focused on the land use designation in the map. And the recommendation is either to keep to the designation in the public hearing draft or to change to a land use designation that allows for less housing while still allowing the mixed-use commercial in the plan.
Okay. Mr. Spohays, are you still in the queue? Ms. Barker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I shared your same concerns with that, of this being kind of a spot approach that we're going after in an aspirational land use plan. I think kind of the core question here we have to consider, when I recall the land use patterns in this particular area, is, is the goal of the plan here to maintain the residential character of that relatively small enclave now that is bordered on one side by the hospital, the other side by Tudor Road, then we have the church, which, yes, I agree, it's essentially a commercial use in nature. And then we have commercial uses over say by the Thai Kitchen and that area, too. So is this, you know, is our aspiration to preserve the residential character, which the recommendation here, promoting a mixed-use development, I think actually does, address kind of a hybrid, it does a bit of both, it recognizes kind of the creeping, if you will, commercial development there and combining it with residential? Or is it to recognize that a lot of this housing is quite a bit older and maybe this should be a transitional area? I think those are kind of the two things that we're weighing here. And, you know, either need to combine them or figure out what this is going to be.
Mr. Spring?
Oh, yeah, this one again. So I think, I agree with the way the staff has approached this issue. And like the new title that we have for this is a supplement to Anchorage 2020, right? So it doesn't, we shouldn't be completely abandoning 2020. This area is a redevelopment area, which according to the definition is supposed to support the employment area. And so it supports it by means of placing housing near the employment area, which is tech, what theoretically is going to reduce the travel time and going to reduce congestion on the streets and be beneficial for everyone. So I think their recommendation is correct, and it's consistent with the core document titled, you know, Anchorage 2020. But I do have, and I have a problem with making all changes, when I look at all these changes in the land use map, the first thing I think about is, well, how's that going to affect the traffic? Is that going to increase the traffic in a place that you don't want it to be? Is it going to cause intersection problems? Is it going to cause left-turning problems? And I find fault with this plan in that it doesn't really provide that assessment or that analysis. And it's hard, I think we're separating a lot of times the transportation with the land use, and it should be together. So I think the recommendation, in my mind, is more consistent with that. It doesn't propose any radical changes in land use, and I'm comfortable in that. It doesn't probably make worse the transportation problems at the intersection. The recommendation by the commenter probably would. So, and if that was the case, if land use staff had recommended changing it to residential, to office there, then I would be asking them, convince me that that's not going to have an impact on the adjacent street system. That would be the question I would ask them if they had proposed that. So that's the question I'd ask the commenter.
Ms. Bailey?
I'm highly in favor of the recommendation by the planning staff on this issue. First, I think it's important to note that there is a neighborhood center to the left, and then there's also a town center to the right. And one of the best things about having a higher level of residential density is it brings those people towards those areas so that there's less likely, there's, you can have a walkable area between. And I think that's what this promotes. However, if there was some sort of office corridor, it would essentially be bisecting two residential areas rather than building up the residential area, which I think is an important integrity to maintain. Having, I also agree that having a high-intensity residential kind of corridor that goes from Tudor to the UMed district makes sense, too, because it's essentially connecting a neighborhood center, a town center, and a business center in a way with the residential area. And I think that is something that's really important. So I think the staff did a great job here. I think if we were to convert it to a residential, commercial use, it would be creating two residential islands, which I don't think we necessarily want.
Mr. Walker?
Oh, sorry. This is a question for staff. I don't have a copy of the UMed plan with me, but isn't the, and I know we're talking about in the map here, it's a stretch from the northwest corner of Piper all the way down to what, 40th or somewhere in there, wherever API is at. So, but isn't the corner itself actually in the UMed plan? Isn't that a, isn't that like commercial in the UMed plan? Am I mistaken or?
Yes, the UMed plan designates it as office-low intensity, which corresponds in zoning to an RO. And I think that's the, the two parcels at the, I think there are actually three lots, but two square parcels at the northwest corner of the area.
Thank you. And follow-up, that's a, at what point, and let's not use this as the, let's not use this case as a particular one, but future cases, where you have a replat that takes place, where you have the front lots that are zoned and in a corridor, and the developer comes in and procures multiple additional lots to conjoin it, to make one larger lot. So now they come back and say, hey, we've always thought that the southeast corner or whatever corner is in this corridor, therefore anything that ever, that's attached to it, by default, falls into that same classification. And, you know, you're only hampered by the size of the developer's pocketbook and expanding that zoning by virtue of the replat. So we have to weigh the pieces, and so the, this comes back, I think, to the original transportation corridors for the land use. So as we look at these cases and we see the transportation impact that happens, that helps us get over certain criterias. So as we look forward to the designations that are in place, we look at the transportation pieces, and we look at transportation studies that are requested, or we're looking for those, those become really important. And they tie back into this land use map as we look at an overall guidance. We've talked about a particular property that we've discussed in the past. We're not rehashing that property, but it, in the future, for any property, we tie that to, and draw your own inferences here, you can draw transportation corridors, land use, how it's been replatted and moved, and the overall goal, intent, and so forth in that area. And we can get there, but you have to answer the questions along the way. And you get hiccups when you can't answer the questions along the way and things get stalled. So, Mr. Spohays?
Thank you. This may be just a little clarification. I shouldn't be, have some gray area on what's the prevailing document? In other boroughs and municipalities I've looked at, it seems like the land use plan map guides the district plans, which guides the zoning. Is that, but we don't have a land use plan map, so here we have a UMed district plan that's been approved, and we're essentially changing the zoning of the district plan to reflect in the land use plan map?
We're changing the land use designation in, for the area. The zoning is not affected. The zoning is not affected, and the areas of growth and change map, here it's 11 by 17, but sits on page 19. It outlines in dark green areas like this, including this and other areas, where the land use plan map, 2040 plan, makes a land use designation, it recommends a land use designation that's different from the area-specific plan. And in this case, it's recommending a change from what that adopted plan has. So, for example, northward in Mountain View, there's a large area there, the northeastern half of Mountain View neighborhood up top here is outlined in dark green. We just adopted a Mountain View neighborhood plan, and now we're recommending a different land use designation, because this new plan, this citywide plan, accounts for factors and factors and issues and policies that the area-specific plan didn't have access to. And in the case of Mountain View, it had a lot to do with Jay Bear and its runway protection area in this area and elsewhere. Down in this, for issue 6A, it has to do with the findings of our housing capacity analysis, which we've been working on, which were not available during the UMed plan process. So, I'd say for, you know, more than 90% of the landmass of the bowl, it follows the neighborhood or district plan that's been adopted, and it's just making changes in areas where, you know, based on its analysis, finds that a change would be recommended.
So, if I understand you correctly, that when the UMed district plan was put together and approved, you didn't have additional housing studying information that you'd have today, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And even with that additional information, the staff recommended a rezone of a property to RO that was ultimately denied, but am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, that's correct, and that's a different, a rezoning is a different process from creating a plan. A rezoning is, when the staff does a case for a rezoning, they look to the adopted plan that's in effect, and at the time of a rezoning, when the adopted plan is designating an area a certain way, in this last case, it was the UMed plan, when it designates a property in the plan a certain way, then that guides the rezoning decision. When we're creating a new plan, we're updating the plan. We're going back and revisiting the plan itself and are updating it, so.
Thank you for the clarification. I was, I was just kind of confused because it was a recently approved plan. It wasn't, you know, the one that was 10 years old, so, thank you.
And what's the will of the body? Mr. Spring.
Well, seems like we might, this might be one we might want to postpone. There's two members that aren't here. I think it's going to be a divided vote, probably, and we should get the input of the other two members.
Let's take that as an impromptu motion for an up and down. Let's table, the motion is, let's table this one for future consideration. Fair? Any disagreement? Anything, not a true vote, thumbs up, thumbs down?
I'm fine tabling this. I just, since I may not be here for the vote on it or for the final, depending on when we get to it, I think it's important to note that the planning map does label this area as, get the wording right, a traditional neighborhood design. And so, I would be worried about a development within there that disrupts that traditional neighborhood design. I think it should be something that we should foster, because there are very few areas in the map that were labeled with this, and I don't think that has been mentioned yet. And so, I would hope in the future we keep that in mind.
Thank you. So, looking at concurrents, we're going to table this one and bring that back for additional consideration. Let's, we're moving along kind of late right now. It's shortly approaching 10:00. I'm not sure how late we want to go, should go, or can go, but it was my hope and desire to get through this one section of mapping fairly quickly, so I don't, I want the discussion to occur, but at the same time, let's knock off as some of these low-hanging fruit ones as much as possible, right? Quick, I think we have some shorter ones, but I'm not going to diminish the conversations as long as it's tracking forward and... From the staff, what is, what is the, what are the hours for the commission for us to go to?
Through the chair, go left in the 30, excuse me, and then do a motion to continue to midnight.
I'm actually going to catch an airplane at 12:30. So, you can stay as long as you wish.
Mr. Chair, we can blaze through the next items pretty quickly, and if you want to regroup at a certain time and...
No, let's do that, and if we need to table some items, let's identify them and table them, but let's, let's keep that in mind, everyone, but let's make sure that your comments and concerns are raised and addressed at the same time. So, in 6C, we're talking about the Glen Square Mall as a regional commercial center. The recommendations from staff is no changes. Mr. Spring had some questions regarding that, so I, there he is, he's in the queue.
Yeah, I would, this, I don't think, I suggest tabling this one. I'd like staff to consider possibility. I know it's in the Mountain View targeted neighborhood plan, but I go this area a lot. I live near here. It's just, it doesn't feel like a regional center to me. It's so small. I was wondering if it could be considered to be a part of the town center. It's probably not going to make much of a difference, but it's, originally, I think, there was a bubble on the map that showed it going across the Glen Highway, the town center, but it feels more like a town center to me than a regional center, but, so, I don't know. If you would consider that, maybe, and we could table it and come back to it next time?
We can get back to you.
Okay. If that's okay with the commission.
I'm, moving along. Yes, you got it, John. 6C. No further changes were recommended by, pardon me, E, 6E. No further changes were recommended from the staff in response to, primarily responses came out of Siri, land development.
And 6E, the, it's just, 6E is documenting that we made a change in response to the property owner comments, and this was a response to the public hearing draft made, to their comments made regarding a previous draft.
Mr. Spring?
I think it's a good compromise.
Good compromise, I agree. Thumbs up, seeing no objections. Thank you. 6F?
In 6F, there is a privately owned parcel east of the Alaska Native Heritage Center. The municipality has a long-term lease. I forget whether it's 50 years or 100 years. We operate a snow dump there. The area has been designated as a community facility. The reason is that we believe it will remain that way well past the duration of this plan's time horizon. The parcel is also accessed through the Bartlett High School mental health trust area, I believe. I'm not sure about that, though.
The lease for this land by the municipality goes for how long? It just says it goes past the 2040 plan.
I was told by the Heritage Land Bank real estate department that it's, I forget which, but it's either 50 or 100 years. It's, so 50 years would be, I don't know how far past 2040 that is, but...
You have a firm fixed lease on this piece of property, all good. You can use it for something else down the road, yet Siri comes, the landlord owner comes to you and says, let's move it from institution or public facility into commercial designation.
That's correct, yeah.
Why would they do that?
Well, you know, they see it as privately owned property, which it is. We do have a parcel ownership map as part of this project. The community facility designation is what we think is appropriate for the site and what will be there through the duration of the plan, and therefore, the recommended use of the land is a community facility, consistent with a snow dump, which is, we anticipate being there for a long time.
So, there is no short-term or interim benefit to the changing the designation for this property, is how I read the staff's recommendations. It's long-term use, it's for the city, it's for its use, you have the land tied up, so any other designation...
That's correct.
I'm good with your, I'm good with your explanation. I read, I read the landlord, the landowner's thing, I said, hey, yep, let's do it, and then I read your explanation, I go, ah, there's the other side of the coin. So, I'm good. You're good. Okay. 7A, which is, no, 7A.
7A documents a change we made already in response to the Heritage Land Bank. It just documents for the public why we changed the Clithero Center and the former Compost Facility site from its previous land use designation in the previous draft plan to a community facility. HLB pointed out to us that the site is not open space, not likely to be used for open space, and so, we corrected that. We wanted to put it in here just as...
Good, I'm good. Anybody else? There we go.
Mr. Walker?
Good. Thank you. 7B?
7B, I might throw the hot potato to Mr. Tobish. I don't, if I wrote this, I'm sorry, I forgot I did.
7B refers to action item 7-1, which follows through from the West Anchorage District Plan, and current planning, zoning and planning staff recommended that we revise it to better mesh with the airport zoning district that they're actually working on right now. So, it's basically a housekeeping change.
Is there any conflict with 3B? Is one of the notations I had identified earlier.
Ms. Bailey?
I don't see this as being a conflict area, however, it seems like in the talk, that the explanation that we got, that it may, it depends on other actions that come, and so, I don't see this being a problem, but just because it seems like it's depending on other areas, I'd rather table it until those areas are decided.
And/or discuss concurrently with each other.
Yeah.
And so, I think, I think the action here is to discuss this with the other areas, which were 3B, is that correct? And 3C?
And if I could add one more to the comment, I'd like to maybe get some clarification on what this new action item means, because I, I really don't know what the implications are, and it seems a little vague to me, so. And it references other plans, which I'm not familiar with, and just a little bit more explanation would be good.
Is that clear to the staff?
Yeah.
How we want to kind of combine those three to make sure that we don't create an inadvertent conflict amongst each other? 7C?
7C just documents the rationale behind the land use designation on the inside curve of Minnesota Drive, which has gone to medium-density, compact mixed housing, and has a stipple on it that would allow the property owner to introduce commercial mixed use on the site as well.
Mr. Walker?
So, I don't have a problem with, I think your recommendation is good, but I did have a question. The parcel immediately to the north of that, which is often referred to as the Pete's Amarillo Paper Plat.
Yeah.
And we heard testimony from the municipality, and I'm trying to recall which group was in here, they were pitching their case to put in that Vector Truck Dump area for cleaning out the stormwater drains, and they basically made a statement as a fact that that, that the Heritage Land Bank is attempting to assemble that, that piece bit by bit, that they're acquiring those little paper plat lots. Can you guys, I don't know, expect you to have the answer today, but I'm just wondering if maybe we could tie that loose end up, because we're showing it as single-family and two-family. The soils out there are pretty challenging, and I don't know, I could probably argue that you could develop it, but I think there's a lot of people that would argue it's not developable, so, I don't know, it seems like maybe we'd want to clean that up if HLB has some big plan to assemble all that, which I'm not sure that that is true, and I kind of questioned that statement when it was made here, but anyway.
Through the chair, Mr. Walker, the Heritage Land Bank is in fact trying to acquire all those small lots in Laurel Acres subdivision, mostly north of 100th Avenue, and that's actually part of their mitigation bank.
Oh, so they're planning to, would make that part of the bank and then hold it as wetlands?
Correct.
So, do we need to clean that up on here then at all? I mean, if that's, if this is, if the aspiration, if part of our plan is to have a mitigation bank and ultimately part of that plan is to bank some of these lands on here, should we include those as open space or something else?
Through the chair, most of the properties in there, as we understand it, the malls are still privately owned, it is ZONDR1, and so, we would prefer to maintain it as residential for the time being. Thank you.
Mr. Spring.
Yeah, I'd like to link 7C and 7D. There's a call for a small area master plan for the same area, right? What's the potential of something different coming out of that plan as far as land use? Is it, is that going to be part of the small area master plan?
Yes, it could. It could result in a different land use pattern, and basically, a small area plan would basically be an opportunity to better coordinate and integrate the land use development of the four major parcels that make up that super block. The Siri parcel, the inside corner Minnesota, the municipal dedicated park in the middle, and then two privately owned parcels along C Street, one JL Properties and the one in the south against Siri. So, this would be an opportunity to create a more integrated super block, and it could, you know, in a, in a most high-level conceptual way, perhaps, create a different land use pattern among them through agreements and other changes, or it could simply result in better connectivity between them. Thank you.
But, but right now, you're relying upon the residential designation for that large plat in order to meet your, what I call preliminary housing space numbers in the bowl?
Yes, that lot and other lots play into our housing capacity estimate for the land use plan.
Significantly.
Well, much of the site is wetlands, and... Well, much of the site is wetlands, and the analysis does account for that, so it's probably putting a dampering effect on how much housing it thinks it's going to get out of it.
So I guess my question is, I hate to go back and re, and make a new land use plan change after the plan, the small area plan's done. Is that a problem? Or, it seems like we should make the land use designation a subject to the final small area land use plan, but...
Well, I think the recommendation is no changes to what's currently in place.
No changes to the current land use designation for that area south of 100th Avenue. I don't, I don't know. I guess I defer to the staff. I just, if there's a potential for a change right after we adopt it, it doesn't, that seems kind of silly, but I guess we've done other silly things before, so...
But then again, let's change it once, too. Let's not change it for the sake of changing it either.
Yeah, especially if they're committed to doing that small area plan. You know, they're, they obviously want to do it, we aren't forcing them to do it. But give us, give them an option to come up with something different, maybe they'll come up with something different for that area.
Through the chair, while the Siri representative and planning staff are excited about the idea, we haven't had an opportunity to further vet the, the concept. So we would prefer at this point to, to land on a, a certain land use plan designation. And there is an action item specifically for the small area plan, and, and once it comes time to think about developing that small area action plan, small area plan, that's action 8-6, timeframe one to three years, we would actually, you know, approach the property owners. There's a, you know, there's another major private property owner there, there's also the Parks Department, and, and, and see how, how well that small area plan flies then. But in the meantime, we have a solid, well-designated land use plan.
So how do we, Ms. Barker?
Well, I may be jumping ahead. I see these two things as very much tied together. What I'd like to see is 7D have a little more specificity that the small area master plan would meet these goals of retaining a certain residential land base. What that would do would be to give it the option, not necessarily being located on the inside curve, but maybe being incorporated to some of the mixed use development in the super block.
Yes, the exciting thing about the small area plan concept to us is that it could take a very Euclidean-looking pattern of uses that are separate from one another and just, and just make a much more integrated land use pattern for that super block where, yeah, the park uses, the open space, the residential and the commercial, it becomes more integrated. And obviously, we can't do that with the land use plan map, but with a small area plan, with the property owners participating, you know, better things become possible.
How do we want to proceed?
Concurrent, so we're looking at 7E and D together. C and D. Okay, concurrents, moving forward.
Just thumbs up again?
Thumbs up again. Yep, thank you. We have 7E, which is part of your handout for this evening. Correct, staff?
Yes, correct, thank you. 7E is, is really a, a kind of a housekeeping item. The land use plan map should have not designated the far eastern portion of the airport lands east of Jewel Lake Road as, as, with that greenway-supported development, that green pattern overlay. The green pattern overlay is supposed to be the Connors Bog Rec area, but we went too far east. We took in the Klap Station facility, which is a street maintenance facility. So following the West Anchorage District Plan, we would recommend to, one, pull that greenway-supported development overlay off of Klap Station, it's not an open space. And secondly, to make sure that the land use plan map is clearly consistent with the West Anchorage District Plan, to amend the list of, of uses within the airport area to not only include light industrial and office warehouse activities as non-aviation uses, but to also clarify that utility and public works facilities may also be accommodated, just to take into account Klap Station. Thank you.
Ms. Barker?
Okay. We're good. John voted twice. That takes us now to, I believe, our last one on these sections, and that would be 8A.
8A is another housekeeping item. Rabbit Creek Community Council and Hillside People recommended that we include the 19, I think it's 1994 Potter Valley Land Use Analysis in the map on page four, the area-wide, the area district plan map. So we agreed to do that, and we'll put it on.
And Mr. Spring?
Right.
And, very good.
Oh, missed the five minutes.
I want to thank the staff profusely for bearing with me as I struggled up here and the rest of the commission. But it, the move forward here for the next step so that we can be prepared as we address additional comments, I think this was helpful process here because it was geared and earmarked and focused rather than a, and so I want to thank the staff for the preparation they did in the documents to allow us to push through. With that, I think we need a motion to come out of the...
So moved?
Mr. Walker, seconded by Mr. Sporhays. Secondly, I believe we need a motion...
And then we need a motion to table this case.
And we need a motion to postpone.
So I move to postpone case 2016-0127.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
And we're going to just postpone that to a date certain?
I believe it moves to the 14th of December.
Sorry, the 5th of December.
Pardon?
The 5th of December.
The 5th of December, okay.
Very good. Mr. Sporhays, that's a second. What's next? Because everyone's got their hand out for that next. Any objections? Do I see any dissent? No. Unanimous, very good. So we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Walker. I can imagine what that is for, seconded by Ms. Barker, who has no idea what the original motion was, but I think we're adjourned.
Would you put that in there?
We will be following up later this month with a more complete issue response, so you'll be seeing more before December. Thank you.
And thank you for putting up with the little levity I could bring to the table here.